Okay, council, I'm gonna start bringing you in one by one. Let it be known that we are recording and we are streaming right now. So you all can have caucus now if you wish.
Good morning, everyone. Got a little late start, but Frank's the man again. Thank you, Frank. Can get started in our caucus meeting here. I know a hot topic's gonna be the Bayfront improvements, but if you would like to discuss anything, feel free.
I don't think it's called the Bayfront Improvement Plan. That's, that's actually the, the real nub of what we're talking about. Is it an improvement or not? So I'm prepared to vote to table until the October 21st meeting after we've had a chance to tabulate all of the opinions that we've received. I've read every single letter that came in, but I haven't done a tabulation yet. There were some particularly good ideas submitted by people with expertise in planning and design and transportation. And we have ideas that we would like to receive in writing from PennDOT. So that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree also. A little bit more time, but I do want to make the commitment today that by the next meeting that there will be a decision on this. You know, as Liz has noted, there are some items that we still need to kind of wrap up and make sure that we're doing correctly. So I think taking the time and it, but, but also important is making the commitment that we will move forward and in this will not be prolonged. And we need to quickly get the information from the public hearing, get any final questions answered, and then move forward so that we don't hold anything up and continue to collaborate with everyone.
We do have John Tushak with us this morning. I don't know if John has any comments to add.
I could hear what Mr. Brennan said. Did he want to push it to the 21st or did he want to vote today?
He's would like to table it also and push it to the 21st.
But, but I'm making the commitment that it won't go past 21st and we've had many discussions with many. I think we all realize that there's a lot of issues still out there that are unresolved.
All this is, is to remove the track.
We, we can't hear Tushak. We cannot hear Mr. Tushak. We can't hear him.
Mike, can you, or John, can you go to a mic, please? I don't know if those mics are. Not yet.
Nope.
Okay, I just want to add that all this resolution is asking is to submit an application to a basic availability track. That's all. And it's pointless to keep pushing this forward and pushing, pushing it. We've committed to hear all the input and comments and consider all opinions in writing from the administration and from PennDOT. You've had four pages of memos committing to that. It's pointless to, to hold up the project based on that fact because if all this is asking is to remove the railroad track.
All you are asking is for city council with its only opportunity to make changes. It is not pointless. Keep telling us that it's pointless for us to do our job. Keep letting the citizens know that it is pointless for city council to do its job, Mr. Tushak. It is not pointless. My job is not pointless. We are not doing that.
Please, please, Ms. Allen, don't yell.
I am going to yell and I'll tell you why, Mr. Winarsky.
Why?
Because women have a voice. And I am, when somebody tells me that what we are doing is pointless. When we are part-time legislators and we have spent years and months and days and hours examining this, I do not want to be told that what I'm doing is pointless. In fact, I would like an apology from the city engineer. This is not pointless.
I thought saying what you're doing is pointless. I'm saying it's pointless to put this decision down, remove the railroad. That's all I'm saying.
You know, then if it's pointless, then yeah, it is pointless. We shouldn't ask for any changes. We should just do what PennDOT and what all the people, I know you live in the West Bayfront, but we should do what all the authority directors who live in the suburbs tell us to do.
I, I think it's been very.
We're asking, we're simply asking to remove the railroad track.
We have no other, we have no other input on this, Mr. Tushak, other than this.
Yes, you do.
No, we don't.
We're committed to hear all your input. We've committed to that in writing and do separate removal of the administration and from PennDOT. And truth be told, you're gonna have a chance for maintenance agreements. And PennDOT, they might, they pull the plug if they can get their maintenance agreements.
I, I think the, the public hearing and also the study session were very constructive. And I think that, I know, John, I appreciate your letter, we met together, noting 8th Street, how it could be more park-like, because that's some of the things that were requested. And I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate the Brian McNulty forwarding us the letter. I think all those were great. I think we, we just need a little bit more time to kind of bring that in and maybe just put some type of document together with our approval. Because there's been just a lot of input and we're just trying to make sure that it's all in writing. And, you know, again, it's all, it's all good input. And, and I appreciate all the hard work that's been done. But I, yeah, like, as I said earlier, I'm committing to making sure the 21st is the last day and that it'll give us time to really pull it all together. I think I've talked to every council member and there has been some great input and some great, you know, questions and clarifications. So, yeah, I do appreciate it. I, I don't like, you know, holding things up, but I am making the commitment to pull it together and move forward on 21st.
I would like to remind council members of another time that we had a pointless, fruitless discussion. It was when we were talking about LERTA. And we thought we had reached an, an agreement with the administration about having some type of fund to aid, you know, minority entrepreneurs. So everybody voted for LERTA except for me because I was skeptical of that. You know how much money is in that fund? $7,500. You know how much money has been dispersed? Zero. So excuse me if I'm skeptical of promises from this administration.
Well, Ms. Allen, I apologize to you directly if I offended you anyway. I do not mean to imply that the whole procedure here was pointless. What I meant, what I truly meant was that it was pointless to push this one approval of a railroad track down the line and nothing else. I certainly am committed to doing the best we can do on this project, make it the best we can do. And we will continue to hear input from all parties going forward. Whether before or after this railroad approval, we're gonna continue to hear opinions and have meetings and have peer review committees and all of this is all gonna be part of it.
I want to make another point about pointless because we know that Charles Bukey had his arm twisted. I know that because I have my notes from my conversation with him. So don't tell me that you're gonna have more input because it doesn't matter. It does not matter. You people don't listen. You twist things the way you want it. I have all the documentation. So I have never been more cynical about this administration and, and actually democracy. It doesn't matter. You're gonna have more people go and put post-it notes or virtual post-it notes because we're still living in COVID. It doesn't matter. It does not matter. That's what we are telling our citizens. It doesn't matter. It does not matter what you say because the movers and shakers are going to get their way.
It absolutely matters what everyone says. What you have to realize is you're not gonna get your way 100%. That's what you want. You want your way 100%.
I don't want my way. I'm not an expert on transportation. I don't want 100%, but we have been moving forward on ideas that we want in writing and in this actual agreement.
Do we lose everybody?
Clarify on the community reinvestment fund? Just briefly, that was funding that was gonna be set aside to help neighborhoods. And what we're doing with that funding is we're using that for the groundwork trust, which will be set up to help with all neighborhoods.
Renee, that wasn't actually what we had in mind. You're the ones that came, I mean, groundwork trust sounds like a really good idea, but that was your idea, not council's idea. And could you tell everybody how much is in that fund right now? Am I correct, $7,500?
Probably. I mean, that's what, what, what we're, because when LERTA, when, when, when COVID hit, Chris Groner suspended the interest payments for the businesses to the revolving loan fund to help them because they were struggling. And so we weren't seeing any interest. The, he will be contributing $25,000 to that fund through the interest that's earned.
The point is that we can go back and we can look at the city council meeting where two other council members finally folded and said, okay, yeah, this sounds great. And that's not what we had in mind. You guys hijacked it for neighborhood improvement. That's not what we had in mind when we talked about it. It, it was very vague. I said at the time that, that the amount, the fee, you know, we wanted an extra fee on LERTA so that we would have a substantial amount in there. COVID hit in March. I don't know when we passed LERTA, but it certainly was in the previous council session. So I'm just using that as an example of why I do not believe the promises that are made even at the local level of government.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm sorry to hear that. I thought what we talked about was neighborhood improvement. I mean, we're also working on.
We talked about trying to have some type of minority entrepreneur fund. You guys came up with the neighborhood improvement idea, which is a good idea, but that wasn't.
We're working, we're working on that separately. We're working on setting up a minority and, and New American Workforce Development Fund. We're also, through CGBG, we funded Paramount Properties to help minorities, minority entrepreneurs specifically create their own businesses. So we're working on those things separately of the LERTA agreement. I didn't, I didn't realize that that was something you wanted as part of LERTA. But, I mean, I just want to say, I mean, we are listening to the input. I mean, we, we brainstormed, we've had several meetings since the study session and come up with other ideas. We're kicking around a lot of different stuff. We are listening to people. So I, you know, it kind of pains me to hear you say that we're not listening. We really are. It does matter. We want to hear this input. We want to get this right. And, you know, as, as John said, this specific resolution is based solely on the remove, allowing PennDOT to talk to the PUC about removing those tracks. And I know, you know, Dave, you don't want to hold up the project, but it is affecting the timing. And, you know,
Renee, can you please explain? I have filed a right to know request to find out about any communication between Charles Bukey and your administration. Can you explain how that process occurred? How he changed his opinion in a matter of days between what he had talked to about me and what he said at the public hearing? Can you say for the record how that happened? Or maybe you weren't privy to it?
I don't know that he did change his opinion.
He did. I have my notes.
I mean.
He changed his opinion.
I read your email saying that it should be beautiful and safe.
And he said it is not that way right now. I forgot to finish, I, because I referred to my notes. So it is not that way right now. So there, there's that. And, and what, what you have done by skewing and making him change his mind is that you are, you, the administration, are hurting our credibility. And I rely on my credibility, on my research skills, know what I'm talking about. So that was probably the straw that, whatever, whatever cliche you want to use, the straw that broke the camel's back for me.
We did not make him change his mind. I doubt that anybody could make Charles Bukey change his mind. He's a professional. He's a consultant. I, I, I mean, if, if no matter what we say, you're not gonna believe us, but we didn't.
Well, I, I'm gonna wait and see what happens from my right to know request and then we'll see.
Okay.
Hello, this is Michael Keys.
Good morning.
Good. To backtrack on what Liz was saying, because I wasn't on council, but I was attending the meetings that involved LERTA. And what the fund was supposed to be was to, if I remember correctly, to help distressed homeowners make repairs. And so I don't, don't know where that language changed, but that was supposed to be the purpose of, of the fund.
That, yeah, I don't, I know, I don't want to get us off on a side discussion, but that, I know that was the original conversation when, when, as Liz mentioned, they wanted a higher fee attached to LERTA. But when we ended up going with the lower fee, there was gonna be no way to distribute the minimal amount of funds to, you know, to have an application process to distribute that to homeowners. There would have to be a, a grant application, somebody monitoring that. It would, it would be an enormous task for a very little amount of money. The Groundworks Trust will enable that group to help residents throughout the, all the neighborhoods within the urban core. And that's why we thought using it for that would help the money to go further and would allow us to leverage resources, potentially getting funding from the EPA and from the National Park Service.
Are we able to pull this from the agenda this morning and put it on October 21st?
I'm not looking to pull it up. It can either be tabled or vote on it. We've delayed it now and from my understanding, they're two months behind on this already. We've had public hearings, we've had study sessions. If we were to delay this any longer, this could delay the whole construction from a finished date of 2023 to 2024, a whole year, two weeks, I mean, a whole year on the project on a whole. And I think we're to the point now.
I, I have a question, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Tushak. Kathy Schaff and I have been down to the Parkway and we know that there is work going on. So is somebody from PennDOT on here and saying this is gonna delay this for two years? What is your source?
That's for the Front Street project. Those are two separate projects.
Can you hear me?
No. Liz, he said that there are two separate projects and that what we're seeing is because of the Front Street project. I don't think the Front Street project has been open with us because they haven't told us about displacement of the businesses, what's happening to the businesses down there. It bothers me that we haven't had a meeting with the Port Authority.
That's not actual construction going on down there. It's, you see people drilling core borings and stuff like that. That's all the system, the design work. That's, that's, nothing's actually physically started construction-wise on either of the projects. There's, they're doing down there to, to do the designs.
Okay, John, I have some pictures on my phone since you're in the room. I'm gonna walk down to you and show you my pictures and you can talk to me about that.
Pretty quick here.
And say when you're walking along that path, there's all kinds of blue and red lines.
Blue lines are water lines and red lines are very light. So they're just trying to identify where all the utilities are. Again, they get them on the drawing all the time on call. So the utilities mark all their facilities and measure those on, put them on the drawing.
So this is all just?
All preliminary. It's just to, just to be able to get the design. It's like we're, we're establishing where all the existing facilities are so we know for the design where everything is. Now we can propose where we want to move it to. But first we have to know where it is.
John, can you repeat on your computer what you were telling me so people can hear it?
What, can you hear me now?
Yes, John.
Okay, Kathy just showed me some photos on the bayfront of some wooden stakes and some paint on the ground, different colored lines. And what that is, preliminary survey. So the designers know where everything is. They call, they do what they call Design One Call. And the blue and red lines and green lines for sewers, they paint everything out so we know where everything is. It's buried. And then the surveyors come out and take up all those lines so we can get them on the drawings. That's all preliminary work. There's nothing final. And there's no construction yet. This is just design.
Thinking at this, thinking at this point, if there's nothing else on the agenda, we move forward and get our meeting started. Laurie?
We'll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, October 7th, 2020 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Winarsky, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, and Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A moment of silence if I could.
Sure.
Dave Wenderich, teacher, coach, and dear friend who's being encouraged today. Just keep in your thoughts and have a great, great day.
Also, please, since we're memorializing people, Mr. Chido Jr. from Also, please, since we're memorializing people, Mr. Chido, uh, Jr. from Chido's Laundry, who was very active in the community, has passed away as well.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, whole, with every day, in this world.
Um, approval of the minutes from the September 16th, 2020 city council meeting, and bills for payment on September 25th, October 1st, and October 9th, 2020. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. We can go into citizens to be heard.
Did we receive some letters for repository sales?
None, not this week.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Adam. Can you hear us?
Good morning. Yes, am I coming through?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Council. Um, Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street, second floor. Uh, several points I wanted to put on the table this morning. Uh, the first, which is probably the, the biggest one of all, is that, um, there's been a lot of activity disparaging city council and, to some extent, almost public shaming. And I find that very concerning because city council is the single voice of the people that elected them to their positions. And when they're doing, when you guys are doing your due diligence, uh, for others to try and disparage that and make fun of it, I think, is wholeheartedly disrespectful of the process. I, I want to just say that I'm very grateful that council is exercising their role of independence and fact checking. Uh, it's been missing for a long time from the city of Erie, only showing up in glimpses, and it's nice to see. It seems to be taking a central role now, so thank you for that. Um, regarding the bayfront Parkway, the real key to that Parkway is access between the city and the bayfront. And the Parkway as currently designed is contradictory to that. It won't only impede it, it will make it impossible in the future. Um, the advocacy is not against the project. The, the advocacy is against the current design. And there's tweaking that needs to be done. And the main emphasis is whose bayfront is it? Is it the city's, or is it out of counters and tourists? And there's a plethora of articles about failures of other cities that have done this very thing and have later torn it out. So, I'm, I'm saying that the process questions, like where Earth Justice has pointed out how some procedural things happened the wrong sequence, and Penn Future about the environmental. These are people that are experts at this stuff, that pointed out flaws. And to reply that it's good enough what they did, or hey, we did all this work, geez, give us a break. The bottom line is, they can't call it in an environmental assessment because it isn't. And if by their own account, if they're so close to doing a full environmental assessment, then why aren't they just doing it and put the thing to bed? So, that's a very critical question that they have not been able to adequately answer. Besides that, the real prosperity of Erie is going to be the access to the bayfront for all along the east and west bluffs. So, access points, as many as possible, to enrich the real estate values of the east and west bluff and beyond is what's really going to make downtown Erie work. Bayfront Parkway current design does not enable that. So that is why we're pushing for procedural corrections and doing the process as designed. And finally, um, we need to stay with what the facts are. So many people try to disparage with just conjecture and anecdotes. That's not how this works. So, all the calls for actual facts, actual data, that's how design works. Any other form of design is deeply flawed. So, I, I'm saying, please stick to doing a right process, please. Because the future of Erie depends on it, and once PennDOT rolls, we're going to live with this thing for 40 to 50 years. Now we're going to end up paying millions and millions to correct it later. So, you know, correct it now. This is the time to correct the design now. And if they do it right, it won't delay anything. It'll just make Erie a better community. Uh, thank you for that time.
Thank you, Mr. Trot.
Lisa Austin?
Hi, this is Lisa Austin. Can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can.
Okay, do you need my address?
Please.
Uh, 1262 West 9th. Good morning, uh, city council, and greetings to city hall staff, elected and appointed leaders, and just the ordinary citizens who love Erie. My belief is that we all share the same intention, to be a part of helping to create a really revitalized Erie. We want to help Erie become a place with well-paying paying jobs for all that want to work, and everyone wants a safe and thriving city. Our difference is in how we get to that vision. In the 1930s, Erie, like hundreds of places in the U.S., followed a redlining plan that guided disinvestment in the east side and investment in places like Glenwood and Frontier Park. Although this happened before we were born, east side disinvestment has continued from the closing of Division Street, demolition of the viaduct, and now the proposed bayfront expansion. You might wonder, how does the bayfront impact the east side? The roundabouts and underpasses, underpass on the bayfront will, uh, help keep traffic flowing around Erie. More traffic will be flowing from I-90, 79, through the bayfront, back on the east side. In fact, PennDOT predicts that the changes to the bayfront will add 10,000 daily vehicles on, to the east side, thus adding more noise, fumes, and danger to the lives of those living in one of the nation's poorest and most diverse zip codes, 16503. Back in Erie's madman era of Mayor Tulio, decisions were made by a few powerful people behind closed doors. It seems to me that the same thing is happening. The PennDOT project wasn't invited here by the residents, but envisioned by the well-meaning, uh, but I believe misguided hotel owners, leaders of the convention center, port authority, Gannon University, UPMC Hamid, and Erie Insurance. Supporters keep saying PennDOT has been planning this for seven years, and I believe them, but they've been planning it without the people who count most, the residents. And I believe their plans are really wrong, sort of a slow-motion space shuttle challenger disaster that will undermine the environment, social justice, connectivity, walkability, and long-term and sustainable economic development. As Charles Bukie said before his bizarre humiliation last Thursday, there's a simple test we can apply to PennDOT's plan. If an eight-year-old or an 80-year-old can happily, joyfully, and easily walk from the downtown to the bayfront, it's not good enough. Erie should not settle. We can do better. No other city is building a waterfront highway. We really need to catch our breath and follow procedure, as Adam Trot just mentioned. We do need an environmental assessment. City council, you are the voice of the people. I really thank you for what you have done. And I really ask that you insist on this environmental assessment on this massive project so we can slow down and take a look at what the cumulative effects are going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Austin.
Freda Cupper?
Yes, um, so I have two basic things I want to bring up. One is the bayfront Parkway, and so I, I am, most, the things that I'm most concerned about are a plan that, basically, requires people to use an overpass at Holland. And there is not any real adequate information about what the heck that thing is going to look like. Is it covered? Is it uncovered? Is it enclosed and covered? Who's going to own it? Who's going to maintain it? And who is going to make it so that people feel safe walking on it?
Excuse me, Freda, can you state your address?
I'm so sorry. 1738 West 23rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16502. Sorry. So, I'll just keep going. And, um, it gets dark here before 5 o'clock in the wintertime. Uh, how are people going to be able to use that overpass? Um, that's one. There's no real information, and who's going to own it, who's going to maintain it? There is a lack of controlled crossings. Right now, there are controlled crossings. That's terminology for my profession. It's, there's, there's a traffic light at Holland, there's a traffic light at Sess. So if you are on your bicycle or you're walking, you have a traffic light. There will be no traffic light. There will be an uncontrolled crossing north of the bayfront Parkway at both of those places. That is a real, that makes it much more difficult for people who are blind and visually impaired and others to cross safely, especially given the amount of increased traffic there will be after the development and the existing traffic and, and the event traffic at Sessifur. Also, as you know, I've talked to you numerous times about construction and pedestrian access in this city. Um, just as, uh, you're looking at, um, new regulations related to short-term rentals, I am urging the city to, um, look at the adoption of the PROAG, or the two, the Access Board, the U.S. Access Board's 2011 preliminary standards for pedestrian access. Um, the, the ADA does not cover the right-of-way. It only covers the built environment, and the PROAG is the considered the state-of-the-art best management practices, and the city could adopt it on its own. Um, I think that in construction, if, um, a project is going to cause a closure of a sidewalk, they should have to pay increased fees. There should be more inspection of the sidewalk closures. They should be, have to pay extra for each month that there is a sidewalk closure. They should have to justify why they are closing the sidewalk. And just to be able to store their construction materials, I don't see as a good justification. They should be required to provide traffic management at their construction entrances if that is the only reason the sidewalk is being closed. Um, there, there shouldn't be, the city should be doing more uses of alternative sidewalk access during construction. I've only seen it done once, and that was over there by, um, Coconut Joe's. It wasn't, it's not their project. The city should join the rest of the civilized world in managing construction projects to ensure safe and adequate access for all its residents. People who use wheelchair, mobility devices, people who are blind and visually impaired. It is just not reasonable the way it's being handled in the city at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Margarita Dangle?
Morning. This is Margarita Dangle, 1948, West 33rd Street, Erie PA 16508. Uh, good morning, everyone, and thanks for allowing me to speak. I really appreciate the bottle, bottle club ordinance and the effort the city council has put into this new ordinance. I also want to mention here that we would not have come this far if neighbors would not have continuously enforced as many agencies and people about the circum, circumstances that they experienced every weekend. For some of them, it was a year of weekend interruptions. And we know with, as time went on, the shootings increased. I'm so proud that they took an active role in that community to create change, and they never fell into the victim role or I don't care role. This ordinance, I clearly see as, uh, beginning to address these issues. And I would invite all who are listening to pay attention to what is happening in their own neighborhood and feel called to speak up about them. Uh, this ordinance is a first step, uh, but our concern is, will it be enforced? So now, current laws, at least to our knowledge, have not been enforced. Like we observed and videotaped illegal parking, drunk and disorderly behavior, loud musing, and all alcohol consumption as driving. We observed that during the time of the COVID-19, the patrons did not wear masks. There was no social distancing. Uh, the allowed capacity of the building was overstepped numerous times and created a huge health risk. Rumors parties over the past months have not complied with closing times, and they had activities after 11:00 p.m. when establishments were supposed to be closed. They are advertising another huge party on social media right now. Other questions we have are, can the hours of operations be defined? Can we avoid clubs operating until early morning hours? Does 352.10 license, not transferable, mean that an existing club will not be grandfathered in? Is there a way to keep these establishments far enough away from neighbors and churches? And there seems to be a trend that clubs are now starting to apply as community centers. Is there a clear definition of what a com, community center can do? Uh, one that, uh, started not long ago is now open after 1:00 p.m., and people are starting to gathering outside there. So, what's the difference between a communis, community center and the bottle club? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sister.
Just to, Margarita is not a sister. She was at one time. She is a layperson.
All right.
Terry Houland?
Good morning. Uh, thank you for hearing me. Uh, my address is 847 Boyer Road, uh, 16511. So I live in Northwest Harbor Creek, but I, you know, do a lot in the city. I use the bayfront connector regularly. And that's what I want to talk about. I, I've been in on several meetings. I've, I've looked at the plans. And I, I don't see, I can't seem to be able to find any kind of in-depth environmental impact study. Um, you know, I, I've lived in Erie almost all my life. I've also lived a few years in major cities where, where there were roundabouts, which, uh, you know, worked out really well. It, so far, it doesn't seem like the people who live here uh, understand how to use them, and I don't really think that that's something that would be practical on the bayfront connector for, for a lot of reasons. One of them is, um, you know, you're, you're already, they're already wiping out the little miniature golf course that's down there. That's been there forever. That's, that's one of the few places where there can actually be family entertainment right there on the bayfront. And, and that's sad to me. Uh, you know, like I said, I, I mean, I, I've been through Tulio's folly. You know, I know what it looked like before. Uh, and, and my concern, a lot of it is, is, you know, what are they going to do if we get a bunch of snow? Where are you going to put the snow? In those roundabouts? How, how are you going to manage those things? Um, I, I don't know that, that PennDOT has taken any of this into consideration. I haven't seen anything that tells me that they have. And, and that's, you know, just part of my concerns. And as Freda mentioned, the, the walkway, you know, looking at the, at the mock-up of it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't look to me like it would. it, it doesn't, it doesn't look to me like it would be very pedestrian-friendly. And I know they said that they were gonna use switchbacks for, for handicap people. I, I don't know about you guys, but, but I can't imagine trying to wheel a wheelchair up a switchback that's, that's gonna be, you know, that high. I, I just think that the whole project is, is kinda really being shoved down our throats by PennDOT. And PennDOT has made mandatory decisions without thinking about the impact of the people who live here. You know, I understand that y'all wanna develop the bayfront and get tourism going and all that. But, you know, I, I don't see that this is the way to go about doing it. We, we've already allowed Nick Scott to build another hotel, you know, and, and block off even more view of the bayfront. And, and I think that there's just a whole lot better ways to do this. I don't, I just don't see the plan that PennDOT is proposing or basically shoving down our throats as, as being particularly user-friendly for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we need to go into the public hearing.
All righty. What's that?
We'll go back.
Right now, we have a scheduled public hearing regarding the Bottle Club ordinance that we are trying to adjust. We're going to hear who are for and who are against this proposal. I, we have our stenographer with us, Laura. Is she on?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Think we're waiting on Mr. Jake. And I don't know if we can just go, do we need to hear him first, Lori? Or can we go for comments from the citizens? I think it will go with comments from the citizens who are for this change and who may be against it. Not any particular order. If Frank has anybody online.
Roland Slade.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, are we done talking about the bayfront?
Yes, right now, we're having a public hearing regarding the after outer, after-hour bottle clubs.
It's, it seems like you guys moved a little fast. I signed up yesterday to speak about the bayfront, and my name wasn't called.
Okay, we had to take a recess from the citizens to be heard for our scheduled public hearing.
Okay, so when is that gonna happen again then?
The citizens to be heard segment will go in back in progress after the process, after the public hearing, which could take anywhere from ten to thirty minutes, I would say.
Okay, I'll be listening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Welsh, you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I was having trouble logging in.
Thank you. If you would, we're gonna let you speak. We, doesn't appear we have too many citizens who want to speak on this topic. But we'd like to hear your recommendation and review of this proposed ordinance and then proposed amendments to the ordinance.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Before I read the recommendation for the, from the Planning Commission regarding the zoning ordinance amendment, I'd like to start off with a little bit of a recap of the August meeting. Just by way of background, the August Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission members were provided with a draft of the proposed zoning ordinance per the Directive of Council for the Planning Commission to look into the issue and develop regulations for short-term rentals. The primary elements of the ordinance include establishing and defining the after-hours clubs and dance club uses, identifying the zoning districts where the clubs can operate, and defining the conditions that must be met by the club operators in order to be approved. This is a companion to the licensing ordinance that was recently adopted by council for these types of clubs. So at the August meeting, we reviewed the, the latest revisions to the ordinance in order to finalize it. As far as the conditions under which the clubs operate, the zoning districts in which they're recommended to be permitted. And, and as such, that final draft of the ordinance was provided to, to council for review. With that, I'd like to formally read the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's completed their review of requests from council to review the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance related to after-hours clubs and dance clubs as prepared by the city solicitor. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the ordinance that, that has been attached and sent to council as a result of a thorough review. So at the regular meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that council approve the proposed amendments. The reasoning for the Planning Commission to recommend approval are as follows. The amend, the amendments will provide for clear definitions and zoning designations for these business establishments. The amendments will specifically define and regulate such business establishments for the benefit and protection of both the business property owner, developer, and the residents and visitors in the surrounding neighborhoods. The zoning ordinance amendments are also required to be consistent with and accommodate the implementation of the proposed licensing and inspection program for such businesses that was recently adopted by council. That's respectfully submitted, City Planning Commission.
Any questions from council? We do have Ed Betza with us also. So if you have any questions for our solicitor, he may be able to add, answer some of those for you all, so. Mr. Betza?
Yes.
Somebody did bring it to my attention that possibly in our existing ordinance, there was a thousand-foot residential, there had to be a thousand-foot leeway between residential area and churches. Is that still included?
It, it is not in this ordinance. The, the problem is that you have to make sure that whatever you allow can realistically exist. And so, for example, if you were to say you can't have anything that I don't want, a strip club or something of that nature within five miles of a residence, what you've effectively done is you've precluded all of it. You can't have, you couldn't have it anywhere in the city. So what, what has happened here is that we've restricted it by zone, by, by commercial zone. And it's not practical to have large distances between other things where you'll end up having no possible place that it could be located. So the way the ordinance is drafted, and that was a big part of what the Planning Commission did, was they actually took overlay maps to make sure that the ordinance was not prohibiting all possible locations of complying businesses. And so with those maps, they were able to identify distances that would be allowed. And having that thousand feet is not something that we can do when you restrict it to that zone. Am I making sense?
I'm trying to, well, but we had that restriction at one point.
You don't, you don't really have that restriction at any point because this is a brand-new provision.
Okay, but in a prior one.
There is no prior, right, that, oh, I'm sorry. In my draft, I put it out, I did have a draft that had a restriction on distance. The problem is that effectively prohibited all of these types of activities from being located anywhere in the city of Erie. If you do that, then effectively what you've done is you've prohibited it and maybe overstating it. But if you prohibit it everywhere, you permit it anywhere. So that, that provision that was drafted in there initially is not something that can work.
Okay. But it has to be in a commercial area, not residential then? Or it has to be zone commercial?
We've narrowed the, the areas, or we've identified the areas where it can be. It cannot be in a residential area. And we've also dealt with current, the city has some other issues. And that is that there are some corner businesses, there are some corner bars that are located in residential areas. And so they, this isn't the right term necessarily, but a term that often gets thrown around is they get grandfathered in for business purposes. Could they convert to something that we might not want? That's possible. But, so I can't prohibit a bar from giving up it, that is, is permitted to be legally open until two o'clock and serve alcohol. I cannot prohibit a bar from giving up its liquor license and saying, I'm gonna remain open to two as a club. That's less offensive to a residential district. The problem is that when I do that, and that's exactly what's happened. When I do that, I give up the control, I give up the regulation by the State Liquor Control Board. So that's how some clubs that may not have good intentions can try to circumvent the rules. So what we've done, this ordinance will not do anything to address that. This ordinance says, when I wanna open up a club, I can only go to a specific area to do it. I can't fix the problem, nor you can't fix the problem of the corner bar. But what you can do is require that they have some regulation, which is what the other ordinance is, the licensing ordinance, that you've already passed to say, that's fine. If, if you're allowed to do it, I can't stop that. But I'm not gonna have you completely unregulated. I gotta make sure that if you're bringing people into the building, that you're, you are safely bringing them in and that you're bringing them in compliance with the, the city's ordinances. If you don't, then you lose your license.
So of course, then it comes down to enforcement.
Well, it does, but, and I, I know that a caller raised that concern, and, and that's a legitimate concern. And it's one that we've all, I was involved in several meetings with, and many of you have been involved in meetings with. How do you enforce some of this stuff? It's a little bit easier to do it through the zoning. Because if it's not permitted in zoning, we can, we can cease and desist them and get to court if they're violating that. When we're talking about parking or, you know, litter or things like that that are occurring at three in the morning, it's, it's not always practical to have somebody on staff at the city out there able to issue the citation. So I think that we're, everyone's trying, but I think that having a zoning regulation and a licensing regulation will allow us to have a whole lot greater practical enforcement ability than trying to ask a code enforcement officer to show up to work at three-thirty in the morning and issue a citation for loitering or litter or something along those lines.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. You might have done mute.
Do you hear me? Grandfathering, everybody must be licensed?
I, I, I could hear you, you're, oh.
You hear me now?
I can.
Okay, the question I had was, those outfits that are out there now, they will all have to face the licensing? I mean, there's no grandfathering here, in other words. They're here already, so we don't touch them? How does that work?
The way that works, we, again, we have two ordinances. One is, the one that you've already passed is your licensing ordinance. That, there is no grandfathering of a business. If I'm gonna run a business and we now require a license, you have to go and apply that for that license. There is no grandfathering on, well, I've used this building and I can continue it. No, you can't. It has to be inspected to make sure that it's safe. So all of that is prospective. I don't care what's happened in the past. You've gotta comply with the city's rules going forward. And I think that ordinance that you've already passed is gonna be an excellent tool for public safety. This ordinance is a zoning ordinance, and it's really, it's not gonna be able to change things that currently exist. So the concept of grandfathering does exist with zoning. If you permitted it before, you can't now suddenly say, well, that type of activity or that business is illegal now in that area. They're permitted to continue to operate. Nothing new could move in that unless it complies with the ordinance. So I think going forward, it will protect the citizens. Going, what is currently there, I, we could probably have a two-hour discussion about it. But what is currently there, I can't prevent, I can't stop it, but I can still regulate it through the licensing ordinance. So I think the two are critical to go hand-in-hand together.
Great explanation. Thank you, Mr. Betza. Was there any citizens that wanted to speak regarding this? I don't know if you see anybody, Frank?
If you're going to speak, please use the raise-your-hand function located at the bottom of the participant box.
We good? Okay, I believe that concludes this public hearing.
Hey, Jim, this is Keith.
Yes, sir.
I did have one question for for the solicitor, I guess it would be. That I was waiting, I forgot, never mind. Oh, the question was, when will the licensing go into effect? And have we received any applications yet? And so how many? Or would that be something the administration is fielding?
In turn, yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that of, of sending out the paperwork. That would be through the administration. I think code enforcement is handling that. So I don't know the specifics of the timing. I could tell you soon if it hasn't already started.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Betza, I know you mentioned that we wouldn't have city employees, say, out there at three-thirty in the morning trying to do a citation, but our officers can write a citation, couldn't they? Or a, at least a warning or something to say, break up a loitering situation in a neighborhood area?
They, they can. There's some practical problems with that. I mean, you, you need, you need to be careful about how you do it. But certainly, they have that power. But if I, if I'm working in a, in a police car or I'm out there and there's three hundred people standing on a corner, you've got some decisions to make as to how you choose to disperse them. Some of those decisions are prudent, some of them are not. You gotta look at the situation that you have, and I think that's what, what's ended up happening. If I've got some illegal parked cars and there's a hundred people out in front, am I gonna start ticketing? That's a decision that, that the police department has to make as to how best to, to enforce the rules, but also do it without creating
Depending upon the situation, of course.
Correct. But you're absolutely right. They have the power, and they have done it. They have issued a, a number of citations. Correct, but you're absolutely right. They have the power and they have done it. They have issued a, a number of citations, many of which were brought to the district justices.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? I think that should do it. Laura, we can, uh, close this public hearing, I believe, and move on with our council meeting.
Thank you all.
We can go back to citizens to be heard.
Ronald Slade?
Hi, counsel, how you doing this morning?
Good morning.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity once again to come before you and, and share my words. Um, I'm gonna be brief, brief. I did want to speak about the citizens in the six, uh, in the one six five oh one area and possibly the one six five oh three area. I know we've heard that nauseam about, um, you know, studies being done, money being spent in the upgrades of the area, which all look lovely. Um, one person stated in the, um, public hearing that, you know, all the things that happened in the city that we fought and happened to go forward, we now love them now. Um, I don't know if that's necessarily true or is that out of necessity because you was given something that you don't have no choice? Um, I appreciate the people on city council that have fought for the citizens. My frustration comes with our city media and this rush to take this money from PennDOT. Understanding that improving vehicle traffic on the bayfront basically spits in the face of the people that live in the one six five oh one area. We have a median income of that area of less than eleven thousand dollars a year. The reason why I bring that up is, is if you're only making eleven thousand dollars a year, you don't have a vehicle. So just like on the east side, the one six five oh three area, when we talk about the tearing down and divide, Doug, which helped walkers, people who don't have cars, get from one location to another location. What you're doing in trying to improve the bayfront for drivers is totally ignoring the people who access this area more so than anyone else, and that's walkers. Um, I know Freda has spoke at length about the disabled. I am not disabled, I'm not in that world, but I can only imagine how difficult that is. Uh, me and my wife, we walk that area often and we do see people in motor, um, wheelchairs and thus and so. So I just wanted to go on record once again that says, please, I think the environmental assessment will show that this shouldn't be done, so if that's what we need to do to stop this, um, and even if you want this, why wouldn't you want the study to exhaust all means of making sure that you're right? Why go through with something that you're gonna have to change ten years from now? Why harm the environment anymore than it's already being harmed? Please listen to the citizens of this area and make it, if you're going to improve it, make it more walkable for those that are living in this area, one six five oh one. Again, I don't know the two thousand twenty numbers, but in twenty eighteen, per the Erie Times News, ten thousand six hundred and thirty one thousand, um, thirty one dollars is the median income of one six five oh one. Please listen to the people. Give us an opportunity to keep this area walkable. Thank you.
Mr. Slade, can you give us your address, please?
Yes, I live and I believe it's District Three, I'm seventy nine Orchard Street, um, one six five oh eight, right off of Peach Street. And I am a homeowner, taxpayer.
Thank you, sir.
Theodore Ely? Theodore?
Yes. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I want to, uh, my name is, uh, Theodore Ely. My address is forty five twenty four Cherry Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. And I want to address a resolution that is being proposed by, uh, Councilwoman Schaff with regards to, uh, allowing, uh, excuse me, with regards to proposing a, a study for Airbnb's throughout the city of Erie. Um, first of all, I'd like to state that, um, I am not opposed to Airbnb's in general, except they're not permitted it in, uh, by law in R one zoning districts. I'm not sure if Mrs. Schaff is aware of, uh, the recent case of, uh, slice of life, uh, that was decided by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court or of the recent case decided by the Erie County, uh, Court of Common Pleas of Morse versus zoning board of Erie. If she was, she would know that, that, that both cases stated that you cannot have, there is no option to have Airbnb's in R one districts, uh, single family districts. Neither the city of Erie nor city council nor the zoning board can pass or enforce an ordinance which is contrary to slice of life, that cannot be done. Uh, the, therefore, the proposal of the city, which is allowing Airbnb's is illegal if it includes Airbnb's in, uh, R one districts. Uh, there there are, uh, two Airbnb's in my area, which is going with, which are operating illegally and the city has done nothing, the zoning board or the city has done nothing to shut these down. There are Donald and Susan Morris at four seven oh six Upland and Ben and Karen Berlin at five thirty seven Gordon Lane. In addition, the Berlin property is being used as an art studio and also a art camp, which is a business prohibited in the R one, uh, single family zoning code. Therefore, I would ask that the, uh, that city council deny, uh, Mrs. Schaff's request for a, uh, study of, uh, the zoning ordinances in as far as they would concern uh, Airbnb's and the like in, uh, single family, uh, zoning districts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brenda Sandberg?
Hello?
I, I am just here today to listen and I don't have any comments to provide currently. Thank you.
Brenda, could you, at the public hearing, you did not give us your address. Um, I know it's after the fact, but could you give us your, um, address, not the port authority address? I, I, I was in charge of that hearing and I forgot, after you spoke, I did remind everybody else, we needed their addresses.
Um, sure, my address is one one eight seven O Arbuckle Road, Union City, Pennsylvania, one six four three eight.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, that takes us to ordinances for final passage. We have ordinance, uh, council file number sixteen one seventy nine, council ordinance number thirty five twenty twenty, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty six nineteen fifty eight, the traffic code of the city of Erie by installation of a stop sign at one intersection. The, um, intersection is West Twenty Seventh Street and Harvard Road, stopping at West Twenty Seventh Street. Motion by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys, that council file ordinance thirty five twenty twenty be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff with their, Mr. Witherspoon and Mr. Winarski. Motion passes. Yays, seven nays, zero. Second one is council file number sixteen one eighty, official file ordinance thirty six twenty twenty, appropriating the sum of one million eighty one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for the following ESG cares, ESG nineteen C two projects. Motion by Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, that council file ordinance thirty six twenty twenty be finally passed by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Motion passes, seven a's, nays, zero. We have an ordinance for first reading, council file number sixteen one eighty one, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one hundred and forty nine thousand seven hundred and fifty three dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, provided for the expenditure thereof. This is the civilian intelligent analysis, uh, grant, PCCD JAG grant. Motion by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Keys, that council file number sixteen one eighty one, pass on first reading by city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, with Mr. Winarski. Motion passes a seven a's, zero. This takes us to new business.
Well. You can move if you want. Can move the balance and then separate if you want.
Any separations?
We have a second, we need a.
Separating number four.
I don't know if we had a second officially.
What are you talking about?
We need a second.
Second, uh, but separate what Liz has mentioned.
I want to separate, uh, two, a new business and also four. Oh, you already get four, I'm sorry, Liz.
Any other separations?
Yeah, separate out number one also.
Okay, we need a motion to, I mean, a roll call to pass the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, well, it can go to number one. City solicitor is authorized and directed to prepare an ordinance, closing and vacating the southern portion of an existing alley adjacent to nine fifty and nine fifty four West Twenty Third Street and touching back property line of twenty two, twenty three.
Laura, it's number one under new business is the one that was separated.
Oh.
Excuse me, by the way, I didn't mean to butt in.
I don't have it.
Airbnb.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I have it numbered here. A resolution by Mrs. Schaff. Whereas the topic of short-term rentals is an issue for municipalities across the nation, whereas Erie City Council wishes to pursue the idea of collecting revenue through licensing and permits of establishing dwellings, wishing to pursue sharing their homes, whereas council wishes to have the Erie planning members move forward to establish guidelines for a possible short-term rental ordinance. Whereas Erie City Council will vote on the short-term rental guidelines slash ordinance in the future, whereas this process is going through the newly merged planning department to the Erie City Planning Commission. Discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I like to address the issue, um, uh, because I know we had a citizen that was responding. The reason why the slice of life or the, uh, other, uh, court, court cases, uh, actually ruled in favor is because there is no ordinance, in ordinance of the city that's voted on by this council would not be illegal. Uh, we hope to work with all of our city partners and, uh, and find the best way to, um, issue a ordinance that's fair to everyone. Uh, there are separate side issues, uh, that you can take up with, uh, your HOA and other interested parties, but as a city, the city can make ordinances that are legal, uh, within the city limits, which includes how they would like to regulate bed and or Airbnb's and short-term rentals. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that, um, Michael expressed that extremely well and our solicitor has done a very good job over the last year in explaining to us the ramifications of the slice of life, slice of life decision. I am not quite sure how Mr. Eli, Eli, uh, read that resolution to assume that it was saying that, uh, short-term rentals could be, uh, held in, um, Glenwood or an R one. It's asking for, um, recommendations and guidance from the planning department. Um, so I'm voting in favor of this. We, we need to, I've talked about what we're going to do about Airbnb since I was, um, elected to council and I knew it was an issue that had to be grappled with, so thank you Kathy for moving us forward to get clarity on this. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Liz and Michael, for speaking. We have an excellent opportunity to use our new planning department. Kathy Robustick and Jake Welsh together will do their due diligence with the Erie City Planning Commission. I have been attending these meetings now since I have been on council as much as I can and they are committed to working together and finding out the pros and the cons, establishing guidelines and moving forward with whatever they, uh, have on their agenda. So it's, may take time, it's not an easy fix, but we need to start somewhere and, uh, this is the first baby step. Thank you.
I have a, just a quick comment I'll also forget add in. Um, I support the resolution also. You know, as we all know, the questions have come up regarding these rentals where they should be, where they shouldn't. And again, this isn't saying where they should be, it's looking at, uh, it's the planning commission is going to take a look at it. So I, I think it's, it's a smart thing to do to look at lessons learned in other cities have done and I look forward to hearing their opinion, um, to, uh, to move forward. Thank you, Kathy.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, that takes us to number four.
I thought that we also had number two. David, did, did you separate number two, your?
Two, please.
Two, please. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. Yeah, regarding to, that was my resolution to reappoint Ms. Andrea Zanaski to the second term of Erie Airport Authority. I support a reappointment, reappointment based on the letter from the Airport Authority Board Chair and also based on a discussion I had with the Airport Director. Her resume and support letter are both forwarded to all members of council. I originally appointed her four years ago because of her skill set and experience, and that's why I wanted to, again, reappoint her and you know, share her resume with council and also this recommendation. Thank you.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Okay, let's get this straight. Now, do you want the other? Do you want number three? Is that what we separated as well, Mr. Keys? Okay. This is a motion by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the city of Erie, by the council of the city of Erie, whereas PennDOT is preparing for bayfront parkway improvements at State Street, Holland Street. And whereas this may be the final official approval required on the project by the city council, other than any maintenance agreements required by PennDOT upon project completion. Whereas city council desires to be included in a review of alternatives and have input on decisions through the final design of the project as per PennDOT policies. Whereas the project requires coordination with the railroad CSXT, Inc., at the below grade crossing where SR four oh four three, the Bayfront Parkway intersects State Street above a single track of CSXT and at the grade crossing where Holland Street crosses a single track in the city of Erie, Erie County. And whereas PennDOT is filing an application with the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission for the approval to abolish and remove these crossings. The mayor and the city controller are hereby authorized and agreed to allow the department to file this application on behalf of the city and authorize the department, PennDOT, to issue notice to proceed letters to the railroad for design and or construction. City council is to be included in the two newly formed peer review committees on the project and will be included on the project advisory committee.
I move to table this. Do I speak about that, or do we take a vote to table first?
I'll second the motion for the table, Liz.
There's typically, there's no discussion on a motion to table. It's a motion to table, a second in your vote. If there's something that's critical that you need to explain, that's, I don't have an objection to that legally, but there should not be a debate on it. You make a motion, second and vote.
Okay, I think it, Ed, thank you for that clarification. I think we do want to make clear, though, that we intend to act on this at the October twenty-first meeting with possible changes to the resolution, just so that the public knows and so the city officials know.
Okay, motion to table, Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Motion to table passes, a seven, nays, zero. Did someone say no? I did not hear that. I'm sorry. Okay, a motion to table, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Go back. Do I need to say yes again, Lori?
No, just a no. Mr. Keys.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
No.
No.
Okay, motion fails to table, ayes, five, nays, three.
Wait a minute, it fails to table? No. It's tabled, I believe.
Motion, motion tables, ayes, four, nays, three. Yeah, we finally got it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other separations that I missed?
Is is discussion allowed on the tabling? After it's been voted, isn't it time for a comment?
On the way it was tabled, probably.
No.
Mr. Keys, were you asking me a question?
I was asking, now that the motion's been carried, can council speak?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, it can wait till the committee reports. That'd be good.
Okay, if there's any more, no more separations, this takes us to committing the reports, Mr. President.
Ms. Allen?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the committee reports are a good time to speak a little bit more about the CSX resolution. So when Erie City Council unanimously approved the Erie Refocus Comprehensive Plan on July sixth, two thousand and sixteen, Councilman Bob Mersky, who is now state representative, said, and I quote, "This is a living document, and because it's a living document, we control its destiny along with the citizens of Erie. Sadly, we have now learned that the citizens of Erie, including the actual residents of the city, especially those who live in the east and west bayfronts, don't control the destiny of Erie Refocused. Even Charles Bukey, the author of Erie Refocused, does not control its destiny. How else do you explain that in a phone call on September seventeenth, Mr. Bukey famously, remember for telling Erie people, "Don't do stupid S expletive," advised me that as an Erie City Council member, we should say, "I'll vote for it, the PennDOT plan, when it is beautiful and safe." And right now, I don't see that in these plans. At last week's study session, Mr. Bukey changed his mind and said at a public hearing that the plan is great. Why? As a journalist, I have been taught to report on the five W's and how, who, what, when, where, why, and how. I don't know why Mr. Bukey changed his mind, nor do I know why the executive board of our west bayfront issued a letter strongly supporting the PennDOT plan despite concerns and questions and objections raised by people who actually live in the west bayfront. I don't know why the heads of Erie's independent authorities, the Erie Downtown Partnership and the Bayfront Eastside Task Force and our west bayfront, none of whom live in the city of Erie, feel that they have the right to make decisions on behalf of those of us who live in the city and pay taxes and want to enjoy our bayfront amenities year-round and on the weekends, not just during the work week. I don't know why we got a pro-parkway plan letter from the advisory committee for Emerge twenty forty, which has not posted a new news release or blog item on its website since two thousand and seventeen. In fact, after Destination Erie, the forerunner to Emerge twenty forty, was unveiled in May two thousand and twelve, the Erie Times News Health Editorial Board meeting with members of the Erie Regional Chamber, who brought in a speaker from Place Matters in Denver, as well as the original consultant for Destination Erie, who was later fired. One of the speakers that day told us that Destination Erie would help to determine, quote, "What the residents of this region want for their future." It would be, quote, "Inclusionary." It would be, quote, "Mirroring the livability principles of HUD, including in the area of transportation." As a councilperson, I have asked how the PennDOT plan reflects the principles in both Emerge twenty forty, which emphasized environmental sustainability, in Erie Refocus, which said that the city needed to reassert its pedestrian scale. Instead of going back to examine those principles and recommendations, both county and city leaders have instead sought to distort those principles and recommendations. What a waste of taxpayer money those studies are turning out to be. Destination Erie received a one-point-eight-million-dollar grant. Add that to the one-point-two-million dollars from the Federal Transit Administration for the first park-and-ride built on the bayfront in nineteen ninety-eight. Would motorists use the park-and-ride? James Walzak, chairman of the Port Authority, said at the time, "There's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation here. You have to create a demand for it because people in Erie have never been exposed to it." Twenty-two years later, there is still no demand for that park-and-ride other than on Eight Great Tuesdays. Yet, thanks to another grant for four-point-one-million dollars, we also have a park-and-ride at Twelfth and Lincoln. Both were built to ease congestion on the parkway. As I said in an email to Brian McNulty of PennDOT last night, "My intention as a city councilwoman is not to block progress, but I'm trying to get answers. Why have some leaders been forced to change their reaction to the parkway plan? Why are the opinions of those who live outside of Erie valued more highly than those who live in the city? And why are the two roundabouts at, that, those particular sites non-negotiable? I suspect that's because the Federal Highway Administration, as I understand it, will pay one-hundred percent for the roundabout. So once again, it's like, get the federal money and use it because, hey, you know, it's free money. I also found a story. I have referred a number of times to a meeting that I attended at East High School when Erie Refocus was still being discussed. And at that time, I actually couldn't remember when that meeting was, if it was pre or post when I retired from the newspaper, but I checked the archives, and it was when I was still at the newspaper, when I was still running the editorial board and writing the weekly column. One of the things that stood out for me at that meeting was that a lot of citizens at that time who were concerned about the viaduct were expressing their concerns. They were talking about the bayfront connector and the bayfront, east part of the bayfront parkway. And Mr. Bukey basically admonished the people in that room. This was in the cafeteria at East High School. He said, "Well, you know, why didn't you speak up when this was happening?" And I remember it was kind of a cringe-worthy moment because I thought, "Does he understand how, how the system works in Erie?" So basically, at that meeting, which was in September of two thousand and fifteen, he told people, "Speak up, you know, you have a say in this." And now we find out that that was actually not true. And I want to quote from an interview that Mr. Bukey did in September of two thousand and fifteen after that meeting. What has worked, this was, it was a Q and A. What has worked best in the other cities, regions that your, your firm has contracted with over the years on development plans? And he answered, "First, there has to be a genuine understanding of the situation on the ground, the extent to which current owners are confident about their ownership stake, the extent to which residents are confident that good decisions are being made at City Hall, and the extent to which public infrastructure is well cared for. At the front end, there needs to be a pretty substantial understanding of those things by the community. What I and my colleagues on city council are trying to do is to make sure that there is substantial understanding about what those bayfront parkway plans are. I confess, I did not know how, what the plans actually meant, met, meant, until we had that August thirteenth study session. I thank PennDOT for coming to the table at that point, for showing us the schematics. It's one thing to say, "Visit a website." It's another thing to actually have a visual look at what's planned there. That is what we have been asking for, is to make sure that we understand what's, what's proposed, what's included in, in the current budget, what else needs to be done down the road, no pun intended, and where that money might actually come from for those future plans at a time when we have severe financial restraints all across the country because of COVID. It occurred to me as, as this meeting was going on that it will be really helpful before that October twenty-first meeting for us to put together an FAQ. And when you organize something as an FAQ, it's, it's easy to digest and it's easy to understand. So and I want to go back to one, one final thing, which was when the city engineer said that delaying this decision was pointless, and I'm sorry if I interpreted that to mean that city council is pointless, but that is the way I often feel. I often feel as though we're expected to just rubber stamp everything. There is no acknowledgement of the hard work that we put in on these issues. And we have other issues that, that we should also be working on. We should be working on police reforms, and yet we've been, had, because of some lack of communication on the parkway, we've had to really just concentrate totally on this. The city council president also always basically scolds me for getting angry and for raising my voice. And I think, how many times did I, in three years, sit there as another councilman who later became actually an ally of me, Kaz Kwiatowski, raised his voice and interrupted? And I don't ever remember Kaz being told to lower his voice. So we're at a critical time in this country, and I am not exaggerating when I say that democracy is at stake. And it's most important to make sure that democracy is working even in Erie, at, at our local level. It's where we have some control over what happens. So I have more homework to do before October twenty-first, and I thank Brian McNulty for responding to a lot of different questions that I've asked, and I thank my city council colleagues who continue to ask important questions so we can get the answers to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Schaff?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Liz, for what you said today, and I am supporting what you are saying. I'm really, I'm not a political person. I'm a teacher. I'm an outsider. I'm an Erieite. I'm many things. I wear many hats. A middle-class person. I am at a situation in my life where I feel like a push-me, pull-me, and I don't want to negate all the good works that the mayor and his administration have put into action because there's some really great ideas out there, and they're working very hard. On the other hand, this bayfront situation has brought up some questions about redlining and social justice issues. And Benedictine Sisters have been a huge part of my life. I went to St. Benedict Academy. So I know a lot about social justice that way. So I would like to know how certain things work, and why couldn't the tracks be separate from all of this? But for some reason, it's a part of the plan, and once we approve it, then I would like us to make sure everything is in writing. We've been talking with various people, and I'm going to put Ed Kissel's name out there because as a local historian along the bayfront, he knows what can happen when things are not in writing. And, and so I think it's really important that we, as a council, have things in writing to make sure that it gets done the right way. As a teacher, I know that bell curve that students have, and sometimes the kids don't hand in their reports at the right time, and some students need accommodations. While I think I've told this council before, I'm a slow processor, so I'm going to make sure that we get this right. And I just am letting you know that. I think I'm being rushed, and I don't like the feel of I'm going to say a used car salesman selling me a car. I just don't want that feeling of being rushed. And yes, there's been studies done where people have, are supposed to go to the meetings. And yet, we have citizens, and I'm going to mention Lisa Austin's name, who spoke. She goes to the people. And there are people out there in the shopping centers, in the parks, in the community. I suggested that the census people go to different areas where I know there are people gathering. There are issues that I have with the Bayfront Parkway. And one of them is speed. Ironically, I want to thank the officers that I saw yesterday who were in the area by the tracks up near McCullin, part of the Bayfront Parkway, that were addressing the speeding issues because there's huge speeding issues, huge. But it's not just on the Parkway. It's in Erie overall. People want to get where they're going, the fastest way they go. And there's a lot of distracted drivers, too. And there's a lot of accidents. There was an accident, I believe, this spring along the Bayfront Parkway. The Runners Club, two different people had contacted me about replacing a bench that was taken out because of a car accident near the McCullin Bayfront area. So someone apparently by car had jumped the highway and took out a bench. So, you know, we need to be more aware of speed and we have to control that speed. And we also have to be aware of making sure our laws are enforced. They talked about people who are at these clubs and causing havoc with the neighbors. So, we have to work as a community. Are we building a road or are we building community? And we have to think of all members of our community. And I'm just trying to make sure that we get this right and that our citizens know that the mayor and the administration and...
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Mr. Brennan, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to say something else about the Bayfront and kind of just go down a little bit of the history. I'll try not to take too much time. But as we have heard, there are issues regarding the Parkway design, the selection of the preferred alternative, and the downgrade from the environmental assessment to the categorical exclusion. You know, we held the public hearing, review the plans, to ask questions, to ensure that the citizens' voices were heard. Given that the preferred alternative plan was recently released and the categorical exclusion was recently approved, we then held the study session last week to review the issues that we heard and discuss the various council members' thoughts and concerns. PennDOT and the city engineer recently sent council follow-up information to answer council questions, and we are now reviewing. We very much appreciate this follow-up. John Tuschek and the city, and also Brian McNulty. The PennDOT info was received Thursday last night, some of their follow-up information, I'm still reviewing that. The Bayfront Parkway hearing input is being compiled and will be soon ready for review. And lastly, our constituents have issues that deserve attention, which is why we're here today. Before we can agree to move forward, we're in the process of contemplating and finalizing issues that will be created in some type of listing. These conditions are being contemplated to help ensure that we are moving forward and that the best plan, it's the best plan for a city and region. I think we all know it's never going to be a perfect plan, but we're just trying to do our best to ensure that it's going to be the best as we can do. These conditions will be vetted and attainable. You know, we're not going to put anything in there that, hey, we need to redo this plan. We'll also incorporate the commitments that have already been made forward to us by PennDOT and the city for inclusion of council and committees. And as I noted in caucus, I'm again making a commitment today to assist to author these conditions quickly without any delay and to approve the CSX engineering at our next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no comment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Keys. Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. First of all, I'd like to say that, thank PennDOT for being responsive. I am happy with the input that they have made and the changes that they have made to ensure that this process goes further. But I do stand in support of my council that if they believe they need more time to take in this information, I was happy to give them another two weeks. That being said, I consider myself the voice of the people among council. I think I'm closer to the streets than most of the other council members. But within the purpose and needs of the, of this plan was to make a connection between the Bayfront and the East Side and West Side neighborhoods. And that's where I want to stand strong that this plan has to accomplish that. And so, for the people who live there, we're going to be using all the tools that we have in order to ensure that we have enhanced access to our Bayfront when this project is over. Another problem, unassociated with this necessarily, is that, you know, it's come to our attention that a lot of our neighborhood organizations are headed by people, or a lot of our city neighborhood organizations are not headed by people who actually reside in our city. And not an indictment on the people, some of them are great citizens and do great work within our city. I just wonder how that, much that dynamic plays out in something like this where it's a regional asset being discussed that squarely sits, you know, within the city proper. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brzezinski. I don't know. Yes, you are.
Semi-retired would take on the city council. And I think a big reason was the fact that I was really excited about the new vision our mayor was professing. We just kicked the can down the road again on a removing railroad tracks. Talk leather. Am I being heard? I don't know how much had, I don't know what was heard. I'm just saying that I think we did it injustice to the folks that are out there wanting to do the job. And the injustice was very, very great because all the concerns, my fellow members of council are legitimate. They're able to walk down the Bayfront and all these things. But we never really grabbed on or even listened to the people that are doing it when they tell you that this was to remove the tracks. And all we're doing, like I said before, is kicking it down. I don't know if anybody heard when I mentioned that I re-decided to become involved here at city council. A lot of it was because of the vision of our mayor. He disappoints me at this one. I said earlier, and I don't know if I was connected at that time, but I'll say it again, his transmission's a neutral, kicking in the drive. I think we should have had some real input from him. Maybe the rest of council wouldn't even listen to him. But at least he should have been there. I apologize to the folks that are working hard to make these things happen. Hopefully, this two weeks won't be that crippling. But let's keep our eye on the target. We're talking about tracks right now. And the other things that have had ninety-some meetings and things like that, they're material. They're going to move around, and we will have to save. We have quite a platform to speak from, so we better use it. That's all I have. Thank you. Mute me before I see something else.
Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. I'm still muted? Okay. I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. Just want to, for the record, can't wait to vote on this in two weeks. Unfortunately, we cut table again today, which so be it. More questions or answers are needed by some of my colleagues. I just know, I believe by law, and Mr. Betzak can check into it if he would. I don't think we can table the same issue or resolution three times. So, in two weeks, we will have to move forward or vote it down, vote it up or vote it down. I do look forward to working with the administration. We have some monies that we got from the Water Authority, a pre-lease payment. Not sure they're actually in our possession just yet and how much just yet. But at our finance meeting today, it's going to be our main topic naturally. So we look forward to working on that. That's all I have. We have Renee with us still.
Hello, everyone. Just quickly, I wanted to communicate to everybody that the census deadline has been reextended to October 31st. There's been a lot of confusion over this. I think this has hampered, partially hampered the efforts at getting people to reply. But a federal judge ordered the counting to continue through October 31st at this point. Waiting to hear back from the U.S. Census Bureau on what that means for their operations. My understanding is that they will continue trying to count those households that have still been non-responsive. I have been working with several of the census takers and the supervisors on properties where they have not been able to reach folks specifically by getting them information for realtors. So if you're a realtor and you've gotten a call from the Census Bureau, they just need to know how many people are living in your units. But we're going to continue to work on that. The online resource is still available. People could still self-respond that way. We're at about 64.8 self-response rate in the city. But the U.S. Census assures me that we're actually much higher than that. I just don't know how much higher. So, if you're watching and you have not taken the census yet, please go to censuseery.com and you can enter, you can complete the census and you can enter to win one of three final drawings that will take place on November 1st. One is for $1,000 in cash. Another is for a $250 Italian Eats bundle that includes gift cards and to several local Italian restaurants and pizza places. And then $100 Brews and Spirits bundle that has four gift cards to four breweries and distilleries. So, we really want to encourage everybody to do that. You know, as we've talked about many times before, this funding is critical to the city, to our school district, to all the municipalities in our region and the county for the funding that we receive, but also for things like Medicare, Medicaid, student loans, Pell Grants, CHIP, Head Start. There are so many, there are 316 federal programs that will be distributing $1.5 trillion annually for the next 10 years based on our census count. So I can't emphasize it enough. It really is very important. So, that's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Betzak, are you?
I do not have anything to add. I will be sending council a memo regarding a tax assessment matter that will be on the, I would ask that you approve the agenda at the next meeting, but I'll be sending you a memo explaining that situation.
Very good.
With that, we will recess our council meeting and, or close our council meeting and head to finance in five minutes. Thank you, guys.
The council adjourns at 10:45 a.m. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
I have talked about Joe Metz.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll begin in two minutes.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Okay, if council would turn their videos back on, I think we're ready to begin.
We're ready with you, are we?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending the finance meeting for October seventh, twenty twenty. Today, our finance discussion is going to be the, about the money that we are receiving from the Water Authority shortly in a few weeks. And Paul Lipton Water has been working very hard in preparing a thirteen-page document that he's going to be going over with slowly so that we will be able to understand our financial situation better. Thank you.
You're up, Paul.
Hey, Kathy. The, just as a prelim to going through all these documents, the Water Authority sold their
We don't have you. See, he's muted, I believe.
Oh, I am. Okay, sorry. Now, yeah. Okay, as a prelim to going through the documents that we put together, um, the Water Authority sold their bill, bonds last week and the proceeds are somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-six point seven million dollars, which will, we will be receiving. Uh, the closing on the bonds themselves is October twenty-second. So somewhere on the date of October twenty-second, we're gonna get an, a wire transfer of ninety-six point seven million dollars into the City of Erie Bank account. Now, the one thing we're gonna have to decide as a group, or you're gonna, you know, through ordinance or resolution, council's gonna decide what to do with that money, whether we invest it, whether we, um, put it into our, into our bank account, whether we, um, finally, we can just give it to the, the paying agent that we have for our current bonds and, and let them handle payments in the future. But there's a, a multitude of options we're gonna have and we'll try to figure that out over the next three weeks. I spoke to, uh, Kathy Schaff yesterday as the Finance Committee liaison to the, to the administration. I explained to her, when we get that money on the twenty-second, we don't have to on that date make an exact decision. I mean, council, council can decide on this in whatever timeframe they want and deal with the money in whatever manner you choose that you feel's the, the right, um, the right path to take. So today's just a starting point. I wanted to put these documents together so everybody could have, you know, let's start thinking about what to do with this. So, um, those that are here have the papers in front of you and those that are on Zoom. Hopefully you have your, uh, email open that we sent out yesterday afternoon. So I'll go through each sheet. Um, obviously, any questions, you know, interrupt me and, uh, ask me any questions. So the page one, the, the very first document, and I, I kinda wrote some handwritten notes at the bottom. That's our current bond schedule. And, uh, it's the way we're at, we're sitting right now. And the second note, and if invested in Water Reserve, I'll come back to that a few pages down the road. But the thing to remember is this is the current bond schedule that we have. We have about a hundred sixty-nine million dollars in outstanding debt that have to be paid off in the next twenty years. And these are the things we see every year in the, the budget handout, uh, when we do the budget sessions. And also, these are the bonds we pay off each year. And the thing to remember here too is that very final column, it shows that right now for seventeen out of those years, our bond payments are gonna be about a little over nine million dollars each year. Um, so then the next page, page two, what I, what I hypothetically showed here based on where the market was a couple of weeks ago. You know, I talked to our bond underwriters and where the market was two weeks ago. The first column shows again that outstanding debt, how much we owe in debt, the one sixty-nine. And then I said, okay, what normally happens when we refund bonds is we'll give the money to whoever our paying agent is at that time. It, um, some of our bonds has been the Bank of New York and some of the bonds we've used Mellon Bank down in Pittsburgh, whichever one gives us a better, better rate at that time. But if we were to take the ninety-six point seven million dollars we're going to receive minus the monies the mayor has proposed us taking out for future, the next couple of years, general fund needs.
And that was fifteen mil? Was that?
In that neighborhood, yes. And so if, if that's the case, you know, now, and I'm gonna, a lot of these are rounding. Some of these ninety-seven million we're gonna get, we're gonna take out fifteen to seventeen million. And I said, okay, if we take eighty million dollars and invest it in with our paying agent, uh, be that Bank of New York or Mellon Bank, this is the money we would be able to pay off each year through the eighty million plus interest earned. So in that case, the big, the, you know, the question or the answer to the question is we're gonna give them eighty million dollars and you can see at the very bottom of the middle column, we're gonna be able to pay off about ninety-two million dollars. So that shows that we're gonna make about twelve million dollars in interest off that money over the next twenty years or so using the paying agent. Because they invest all this money in treasury notes, treasury bills or treasury bonds. And I say treasuries because each of the three investments that bills, bonds, notes have different agings and timeframes, but they invested in treasuries. So in that case, our bond schedule with the debt we owe minus the income and the eighty million we're gonna spend would give us page, or not page, column three. That would be our new annual debt service. Our new annual debt service would go down to about, you know, four million dollars each year.
Okay.
Okay, so that's page two. And then page three is, is just the bonds. It's page one again, but with the page two numbers. So everybody has just a, a looksee on what hypothetically, again, what hypothetically the, the, our new bond schedule would be. Now, page four gets a little different. It's been proposed to me by multiple members of city council and the mayor's asked me to look into this and people have asked me to look into this. What if we took that eighty million? And instead of giving it to the paying agent, we put it in a fund like the Water Reserve or we put it in the Water Reserve where we know that we can invest that money and we'll invest it in some equity funds and we'll invest it in some fixed asset bond, bonds. And for the last twenty years or so, if we've invested that money in a vehicle such as the Water Reserve, we're gonna make like five to six percent in interest. So if we did that, this is where the bond schedule would be if we invest, invested the money in that way. Again, column one shows that we pay nine million dollars a year in interest. Column two, which is a little different than column one, because the treasuries right now, going back to page two, are only paying about half a percent in interest. If we put it in the Water Reserve and we were able to earn five percent in interest on that balance and eating away at the balance on an annual basis, we'd be able to get in the neighborhood of about six and a half, seven million dollars each year in interest and, and principal that we could take out of, uh, that, of that beginning balance of eighty million dollars. And you'll see that column three then would be the new net debt service. So comparing column one to column two, investing, or page two to page four, sorry. Our net service, net debt service goes down by about a million and a half dollars a year by investing the money in the Water Reserve Fund. If, if, there's the big if, and I, I always come back to that big if. If the Water Reserve can average five percent return on money over the next twenty years. I mean, if we hit a bear market and interest rates go through the floor, I, you know, this is hypothetical based on what we've had the last twenty years. I, I
That's the average.
The average. And so I can't, I mean, you and I don't know that this is what's gonna happen the next twenty years. So always gotta keep that in the back of your head. Whatever happened in the past does not mean that's gonna happen in the future.
Paul, can you explain, you know, the, the, just to refresh our memories and for any citizens, you know, there's special restrictions on Water Reserve Fund. Would those restrictions apply to the use of that seven million dollars a year in hypothetical earnings? In other words, would that ordinance have to be adjusted? Um, would, would there have to be a super majority of council every year that figures out? Would, would there have to be a super majority of council every year that figures out how to spend that?
Interest money?
Yeah.
Liz, I'm gonna say to you, the answer is, as, as it's written right now, if we put that money in the Water Reserve Fund, you have to have a super majority to take it out. So, so Ed's gonna have to do some legal changes to that document. And, and this council, as, you know, we're gonna sit and talk about this for the next month, and, you know, probably you're gonna be sick of listening to me saying this. No matter if the market goes up, the market goes down, whatever happens, we're still on the hook for that $9 million of bond payment every year. So we have to take money out of that, if, if we put it in the Water Reserve, we have to take money out of that Water Reserve to pay those bondholders every year. So Liz, I, I guess I'm wrong about answering your question. This council, the next council, the council after that, everybody has to realize if we're making a ton of interest, we're making no interest or whatever, that money's gotta come out every year.
To cover the debt.
To cover the debt, the debt. And that's the difference between page two and page four. If the money goes into the, with the paying agent, there's no thought in our mind ever, ever, ever on what to do, or, or one council may wanna take the money out, and another group may wanna take, not take the money out. If we give it to the paying agent, that money's in there, and the state law, that's why, page 13, now I'm bouncing around, but page 13, I showed you the Local Unit Debt Act, you know, they say right in there, it's irrevocably deposited into that paying agent bank account. So it's there, bonds are always gonna be covered. There's safeness to it in the interest rate earned, although the interest rate is nowhere near as good as putting it in the Water Reserve. But we never, ever have to worry about bond payments, or councils fighting, or, you know, nine years from now when Mayor Shember leaves and a new mayor comes in, this mayor may want, it, it's, there's no thinking or thought when it goes in with the paying agent. Here, Liz, Ed's gonna have to, you know, at the direction of the mayor and council, is gonna have to fix the ordinance so that it says there, you know, super majority or not, we're taking money out of that account.
To cover the debt.
To cover the debt, yes.
Okay, and so theoretically, I mean, if it was a really, really bad market, because the Water Reserve has, what, about 12 million in it, is that?
Correct.
So, and I mean, I'm only casting a very bad theoretical, like, and I'm sure there could maybe not be a time when there would be no interest, but is it possible that we would even have to dip into the 12 million? And I know, I'm just being theoretical, but I'm just trying to get a handle on this, and you don't know, but I just.
No, I don't. And Liz, I, when we get, we're on page four, but page 10, 11, 10, 11, 12 show some hypotheticals on, on how this money would have been spent, or how this money would have been handled the last 20 years following the, how the Water Reserve money has
Okay.
has earned interest. But to answer your question, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna be, to answer your question, yes, it's absolutely positively possible. If, if the market went negative 3% for the next 20 years, we got a problem. If that money's in a fund, or a bank account, or an investment account like the Water Reserve. Now, that hasn't happened since the Great Depression of 1929 through about '36, but, but at any point in time, something like that could happen. It absolutely positively could happen. So we always have to remember that.
Okay, so, go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, I just wanted to add, we haven't talked at all about how that money would be invested yet, which is important, important for you to know in this conversation. We're talking about a balanced portfolio, which would be 60% stocks, 40% bonds. The bonds are, the thing we would put with the other alternative, that's where the money would go. So that's considered a safe, safe investment, and we'd have plenty for the next couple of years in bonds. So if we do hit a bad period, you know, we just keep taking the money out of the bonds and let the stocks recover. So I think that's something important for you all to, to understand.
Eric?
Yes.
Uh, question is, why 60 stock and 40 bonds?
Well, because that is a relatively safe portfolio as opposed to having more in stocks, which increases your, increases your return over time, but it also increases your risk. You know, there, there are portfolios that are 100% stocks for people that, you know, don't care about the risk. But I think with this money, we need to be a little bit careful, and that's why we're suggesting a balanced portfolio. That way, every year, we should have plenty of money to pay down the debt as needed. Uh, but we're still gonna get probably more than five times the return we would get on average in, in the other approach, if we put it all into bonds.
Yeah, and, um, not to put, Teresa, as kind of the leader of all the pension funds, do you wanna speak to that? I mean, the 60-40 has been what's been in play in the pension funds for forever, and that, as the mayor said, a lot, you know, you can have funds that are 100% equities, but the, the safeness of getting some type of return each year is what the pension funds have always worked on. And I'm sorry for speaking, Teresa, I asked you to.
That's fine, but the, the investment policy is set up that way. So any changes to the investment policy has to be made by council anyway, to make any kind of changes to it. So it was kind of designed to, to, to not be a risky investment.
Paul, with the payment of the debt, paying the debts down, would that give us a better bond rating?
It, it, it could. We've talked to the people at Standard and Poor's about this, and because of the fact, I mean, we're, the, the one thing in all of these we're looking at is these huge decreases in our annual debt service. But we also have to remember, we're not going to receive the 3.5 to 4 million dollars a year in, in lease payments each year. So Standard and Poor's, in the conversations we've had with them, it, not that, it's a, we're taking a positive step, which Standard and Poor's is very happy about, but, you know, they've also, they also realize that there's a negative to the, the revenue flows. But it, overall, Mel, this is looked at as a positive step we're taking. I can't promise that we're gonna go from an A rating to an A+ or a double A rating by doing this.
So we're at an A rating right now?
Yes, we are, yes.
Thank you.
Okie doke. Then page five, only, somebody else brought this up to me, so I put this together. And the question here was, well, what if we put half the money in, in accounts such as the Water Reserve, and we put half the money in an account, like, giving it to a paying agent as the treasuries? And you can see that, I mean, it's, I did 50-50. I mean, and I didn't wanna sit there and go, okay, 75, 25, and, I mean, I, it's an exercise in math. If you look at the treasuries, it's $4 million. If we put the money in the Water Reserve, our annual debt should be about $2.5 million. And if you go 50-50, it's a little bit about half, little less than half, because the treasuries, obvious, are not paying as much interest. But I did this 50-50, just, you look at that final column. If we do a 50-50, and if the Water Reserve returns 5% each year, and treasuries only return half a percent or so, we'd be still making a debt payment of about $3.2 million, which is way down than the 9.2 we're making. So that's what those five pages are. And again, these are the math of what the, the bond payments are like. And they can change at any moment, you know, due to any kind, anything within the bond market, these, these numbers could change. They could go up, they could go down. And I'm gonna stop for one second. Frank, is Jay, Jay, is Jay on? No? He had a meeting at noon. So Liz, you had asked me to have the Susquehanna Group put together a little plus or minus, positive, negative on, on the different, the differences in doing these, you know, using treasuries, using, using the Water Reserve Fund. Or, you know, there's also been, one of our underwriters made a, just a suggestion that based on the uncertainty, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen with the COVID virus? I mean, that's played a big part in the market. You know, we have a presidential election in a month or so. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff that can happen in the next month to three months to six months. You know, one of the guys that I talked to, an underwriter, says, well, you know, you could put this in cash funds or money market, where you're not, and I'm not saying that's a good idea either, I'm just saying, it's another, and I didn't, I didn't do any math on that, but, you know, just put it in a money market account for the next six months till the COVID virus comes back. Or not comes back, the vaccine comes out and the virus goes away. I mean, then we have, you know, maybe the stock market is a little more stable. It's a thought. It's a thought. Again, as we're thinking about what we're going to do with this money, again, as I told Kathy yesterday, we're getting the money on the 22nd, we don't have to do something or anything on the 23rd. It, it's a thought. Leave it in cash, and then maybe a year from now, treasuries go way back up. Or the stock market looks as though, you know, something happens with the virus, with whatever, the economy, it looks like things are gonna go great guns for the next 10 years. Well, then we put it in the Water Reserve, knowing things are, you'll never know it's gonna be great, but it could be great. So.
And I guess my, my thoughts on that are, I'm sorry.
Mayor?
I think Ed was trying to talk there.
Okay.
You're muted, Ed.
The usual. Unmute me there, Francis. There it is. I just said, is money market the safest venue?
No, cuz with cash, yeah, with cash, you're gonna get a return on investment, yes. But again, you look at your bank statement at home, you're not making any interest on that stuff. So I mean, the whole idea here is, for, the more interest we can make, either the less we're going to have to pay in debt service, or if we wanna stay a level X amount of dollars in debt service, we can use that extra money for general fund purposes, for funding our paving program, for, you know, a multitude of things. I mean, if, if we go to just the, just using the treasuries as a basis, we should be making $4 million a year in payments, okay? And that would eve us out. And say, then we go to page four, and we say, okay, we know that we wanna mentally make this $4 million a year debt payment, but we're gonna get a return because we're gonna invest it in the Water Reserve and get 5%. Well, the Water Reserve's gonna give us 6.5, 7 million dollars a year. Well, 6.5, 7 minus 4 gives us 2.5 million dollars more that we weren't expecting. Now, we can use that to pay down debt, that's good. Or we can mentally keep that $4 million a year debt payment in our mind and use that extra 2.5 million as our paving money. Because in a couple of years, when the bond runs out, we're not gonna have any paving money. And we've all talked about, how are we gonna, are we, I mean, we don't wanna issue another bond for paving. Well, this could be used for paving, or other projects the mayor and council deem necessary. So there are options. But yeah, the money markets, Ed, I mean, you just look at your checking account at home. Now, we have accounts with two or three of the banks here in Erie, where if we put more than a million dollars in our checking account, we get a much better interest rate than what you and I have in our personal checking account. But, you know, 1%, 1.25% is nowhere near what we, what we'd earn on average, or what we have earned on average the last 20 years in the equity slash fixed asset bond market. So, and Mayor, I'm sorry, you were gonna say something?
That's okay. I just wanted to throw in that, you know, I spent 40 years in banking, including the last 13 years, I basically was advising people on how to invest their money. And I, yeah, I really believe our best option is that 60-40 option, where we invest the money. I can tell you, I counseled people through 2008, which was the Great Recession, which we all recall that, which lasted, I think that lasted about a year and a half, actually. Uh, but basically, all through that, I advised people, leave your money where it is. It, you know, you're getting better returns now in some ways, because the value went down, but you're still getting the same dividends, interest, that sort of thing. Only one of my clients ended up withdrawing their money and moving it, and the last I knew, he still had that sitting in savings, cuz he couldn't decide when to, and finally reinvest it. And of course, the market came back, the people that stayed in are doing well. Uh, so I believe we should take a long-term view of this. And we, I'm certainly happy to talk about it in as much detail as, as all of you want to. But I believe the money we can earn on this over time, there will be years, as you'll see later in Paul's handouts, there will be years when it will lose money. But there'll be a minority, and on average, we should earn at least 5% per year on average. It, it'll work out great, as you'll see later in Paul's handouts, if not, good years come early, but we can't control that, you know, you, you can't control the economy. And again, I'm asking you to, you know, seriously think about that 60-40, and, and invest, getting it invested right away. I really don't, again, as a financial professional, I don't believe in waiting. Uh, when you have the money, I think you should invest it, especially right now. I think we have an opportunity here to get in at a reasonable time, so, so I'll, I'll shut up again, thanks.
Okay, back to where we were with the Susquehanna Group, the next four pages.
Paul, you're muted again. Paul, you're muted.
Unmute, unmute, okay. Back to the, the next four pages were, just as Liz, you'd asked me for a positive, negative on the different aspects of what we could do with this money. And Jay Wanger from the Susquehanna Group put this together for me, and I think he just got done with his phone call, and he's gonna join us. Frank, is he on, or? Not yet, okay. Well, then I'll start, and then when Jay, when Jay gets on the call, I'll let him take over for me. So page six.
Paul, I'm on. I'm on, yes.
Hi, Jay.
Good morning.
I, I was just gonna start going over your document, the four-page document you sent me. Do you wanna do that instead of me, or?
Uh, go ahead, you can, you can lead, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, so page six, in, in the handout I gave everybody is just, you know, the, the, page one of the PowerPoint Jay put together. Page seven is the positives and negative considerations to if we purchase US securities. And as I, that, that's what we're doing currently, using the treasuries. The money goes into that account, and it's irrevocably put in there. So the positive considerations are, we have a precise and expected cash flow, which we know because we've already bought those treasuries for the next 20 years. Uh, there's no risk that expected defeesance fails. So I think, Liz, that answers your question. Would, would we ever have to go into the $12 million that's still in that Water Reserve? And this is a consideration, the plan that will be put in place in 2020 will be executed without risk or exception for the next 20 years. Now, the big negative, as we've talked about for, you know, the last half hour or so, and I'm sure everybody's sitting at home thinking about this, is there, the, the rate of return right now in treasuries is really, really, it's low. It's very low. I mean, we all know that, you go to the bank to buy a three-month or C-month, three-month or six-month CD, they're, I mean, they're not the exact positive the same as treasuries, but it's really no, really low. But there's a safeness to doing this. Page eight, we have the invest in a pension-like investment plan, which, which I'm nearing the Water Reserve, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to use the Water Reserve either. I mean, the mayor and US council can set this up any way you want. I mean, we could, oh yeah, the, the, the bond reserve and hire new money man, I mean, that becomes a nightmare in interviewing money managers and the whole bit. So I think, as everyone keeps talking about the Water Reserve, Teresa's oversight of that pension fund has done a pretty good job the last five, seven, whatever years. How many? Seven. Um, so, so we're comfortable with the money managers we have. And again, that's just, that's a choice everyone's gonna have to make, but we've done a pretty good job with, with. But we've done a pretty good job with, with the pension fund monies, the money managers. If somebody's not performing, we get rid of them. You know, as the mayor said, we know that if, if they really follow their 60-40, the fixed assets, fixed, fixed assets that they're buying the bonds are going to return us money each year. You know, if equities have a bad year, a couple of years, okay, we'll have to deal with that. So, but back to this thing. So the positive considerations are, number one, assuming a professionally managed long-term investment portfolio, the plan could earn considerably more than a portfolio of US treasury securities. And we saw that in the difference between page two and page four, that if you follow just that 5% return every year, you're going to get a heck of a lot more money than investing in the treasuries. You know, we have had years where we did 6%, so we, we use 6% here. But the, the increase in the return is huge between the treasuries and the water reserve fund. Well, I'm going to go to that's in the next three or four pages. Because that's a big, as the mayor said earlier, if we have, if, if next year and the year after are positives, positive, I mean, I don't want to speak to that, positive 10s or 15%, that's a huge jump, so. Okay, negative considerations to this is any investment beyond the portfolio will have a rate of return risk. And I mean, there, there are years when the market goes negative. I mean, the mayor said he had a client that sat through 2008 and 2009 where we had bad, I mean, it can't happen. So if we do this, this way, as the mayor's proposing, we have to make sure that we understand we're in this for 20 years, we're in this for the long haul, that if we have a negative 10 and a negative 10 years in the stock market the next two years, we can't panic. Because if we panic, we've lost the money in, in the, in the, in the corpus of the, the fund and then all of a sudden then we're going to do something else? You know, take it out and go, let's buy treasuries at this time. Then we've really shot ourselves in the foot. So there is a rate of return risk on this thing. And Jay's, with me going on and on, a portfolio could lose principal value. It's absolutely entirely possible. And then unlike a pension plan, it's a perpetual investment. The portfolio to defeat the city's debt has known dates. Meaning Teresa's watching over a pension plan that's going to be here for the next 100 to 200 years. This fund, we know, has a 20-year life. I mean, because that's, that's, it's equal to what our debt service is. We only have, we have 20 years to pay off the debt that we have on the books right now. So any plan we make is a 20-year plan. It's not, you know, 100 or 200-year plan or 50-year plan as, you know, the, the stock market's returned 8% over the last 100 years. Well, that's true, but there have been good years and bad years, so.
Well, if I could, if I could jump in, what, what that means to me is we can have enough set aside in treasuries to pay the next couple of years.
We could do that, yeah, yes.
You know, 40% of whatever we have is going to be in the treasuries. So even if stocks are down in a year, we're not going to cash the stocks in that year. It'll be sometime in the future.
Yeah, because they're going to bounce back.
There are ways to protect against that.
Yes, I mean, they're going to bounce back.
I have two questions. I just was looking up, for those of us who are not investment professionals, if Jay can just define defees, I think we, that would help us. And so I was looking it up, but I, I think that we need a layperson's explanation of that. And then I also have a question for the mayor. It seems to me when we first started talking about this, that you did favor using the money to pay down the bonds. So what made you change your mind? I recall from last year that that, that's the way that the discussion went. And of course, I objected to the fact that, that we're already dipping into it to balance the budget for the next couple of years. So let's have Jay define, say that really quickly. Jay defined defees. And then the mayor tells why you changed your mind about how these funds should be used. So two questions there for two different people.
All right, I can start, Mayor, would you like to address your question first?
You were, you were the first question, so go ahead.
Okay, all right, I apologize for the dark picture. I've learned the difference between office lighting and home lighting is significant. So by defees, so there are a couple of issues when we talk about the fees. One is when you look at your financial statement, if you were to purchase US treasury securities in a dedicated account, what we call an escrow account, to pay off the schedule of bonds, it's represented in the numbers that Paul has provided to you. It's where, I forget the amount of bonds we're paying off. But it's a dedicated stream of principal and interest payments that we're going to pay with the invested proceeds, invested in very specific maturity dates and interest rates in US treasury securities. So from a legal perspective, we call those defees because there is a source of fund set up in a separate dedicated secure escrow account to pay off those bonds. So that's what we mean by defees. Now, the effect on your financial statement will be if you set up a dedicated portfolio, you'll book the asset, the cash that you receive, a close on the bond issue. And then the escrow securities will be purchased. And so while your debt remains on the books, there is a dedicated pool of money to pay those off. And, and that pool of money becomes restricted funds, you can't use it for anything else. So the advantage of the escrow account is you have a known cash stream of cash flow to pay off a known number of bond and interest payment dates over the next, called 10, 11 years. And so the, the goal of reducing your general fund obligations to pay debt service is reduced by that cash flow stream produced by the proceeds from the bond issue. As Paul pointed out, that escrow account in today's marketplace is going to yield something like 0.6 or 0.7%. So less than 1%. So it makes it a very, very low rate of return proposition. But it is a known cash flow stream that will pay off a known number of bonds and interest payments as they come due. To the mayor's point, if you invest it differently in an unrestricted account, and you can do that because these are not tax-exempt bond proceeds. So this is very fungible money from the city's perspective. You can do whatever you want, you can, you can use it to support the general fund budget. You can put it into a savings account, you can invest it long-term, you can do whatever you want with these proceeds. And the mayor made a point of maybe, maybe you split, you know, split the portfolio into two pieces where the obligations for the next, say, three to four or five years would be invested in treasury securities and longer dated obligations, you would have this more at-risk pool of funds invested in a more diverse portfolio to earn a higher yield and give it time to work, I think is a good compromise in the structure. Now, before I go further, let me just point out, we as a financial advisor operate under SEC regulations and we have a fiduciary standard that we have to uphold. So I cannot say to you under that fiduciary standard that you should take risk in this portfolio. I would get my butt suit off and, and not have a, a lick of a chance in court. We have to take the fiduciary position of as little risk as you can take in our position. So just keep that in mind as you evaluate what we say and your decision. So defeesance is just a term we use in the bond business that says you have legally paid off bonds, even if they're not due until some date in the future. That made sense?
You okay with that, Liz? Okay.
And then Jay, could you talk about the financial statement consideration if we use the water reserve? Because it is, it is a little different.
Yeah, so if you, so if you use, if you take the 100 million, put it into an escrow account, it will show up as an asset on your financial statement at the end of the year. And then you will have a corresponding footnote that will show the defeesance to pay off all of those obligations. And so your asset goes up, you'll have a liability to pay off those bonds, but you have the asset to pay it off. If you don't dedicate the portfolio, you're simply going to book the same, the same 80 or 90 million, whatever the number is. But you're not going to reduce your liability because you still have uncommitted funds on the balance sheet. So you're going to just put it into an investment pool, probably a long-term investment pool. So it would show up as a long-term asset. And, but your debt doesn't change at all on the balance sheet.
And, and Jay, my reason for, that, that goes back to Mel's question about this helping or hurting our bond rating. The people at Standard and Poor's, I mean, they understand that when you, we've made a plan to get rid of this debt, which they like. But they also understand on our financial statements, our balance sheet shows an asset equal to the liability. So there's really no financial statement, financial statement advantage. There's the advantage to Standard and Poor's in that we have a dedicated plan.
Well, the, you were, your net outstanding debt would drop by the amount of bonds that are legally defees.
Defeesed each year.
That, that would be from the rating agency's perspective, when they look at your leverage, your leverage would go down by a lot. Now, if you get $100 million added to the asset base, they certainly would view that as improved liquidity.
Okay, so I'll answer Liz's second question now, if that, if we're done with that one. You know, why, why did I not talk in the beginning about investing the money? There's a couple of reasons. One is I didn't realize at the time that we're restricted in terms of the amount of debt we're able to, to pay down. There are restrictions on it, so we can't just, I originally was thinking we just pay it all off as much as we could. But we can't do that by rules. So then we started talking about, okay, what are we going to do with this money that we can't use? You know, right, since we can't pay it all done right at the beginning. And then we started looking at options of what kind of, can we get decent returns that would help the city in other ways as well? And as you can see, again, if you compare pages two to four that Paul went over earlier, you see the amount of, that is called defeesance escrow, that's the amount we're paying on debt. And then the amount, you know, the net debt service that we need to pay out of the budget. You can see we're down about $1.5 million. So we're saving $1.5 million by investing in a 60-40 stock bond portfolio because it generates so much more than just putting the money into treasuries does. So that's what kind of led us to where we are today. Any other questions on that at all or? That make sense, Liz? Okay.
Okay, then back to page nine and the summary, Jay kind of went over the first, the first bullet point on page nine, that they're recommending the city not assume any risk with respect to the payoff. You know, just based on the fiduciary rules he's working under. And I, I don't know if he wants to expand on that, but the, and then bullet point two, the burden of future city administrations to have additional debt obligations and no lease payments to offset the debt obligations will be a significant budget burden. So we, again, we all need to, we all need to remember that. That it's possible, it's possible. I, I mean, the mayor's edict to me has been no new bonds. So in my mind, there's no new bonds, but it's possible. You know, I made the joke to the mayor yesterday, if he quits tomorrow and the new mayor fires me on Friday, you know, things could change. So that's, it, it, the, the leadership of council. Budget considerations can change, but, and the understanding of the budget may not be as good 10 years from now as what, you know, the, the group that we have together today has. So it just, when the plan's put in place, you know, we need to make sure the plan is set in stone so that we do this right. Yeah.
When we talked yesterday, we also said that if, if something like that is, is going to happen, and I'm not quitting, but, and you're not going anywhere either, at least as far as I'm concerned, Paul. But if something looks like it's going to happen, then we would take some steps to, to make this more firm in terms of what's going to happen.
And I think, Mayor, that goes back to Liz's question about, you know, the, the, we need, this need, you know, perfected through ordinances. I mean, the one, when the water reserve was set up, that was set up, that was perfected through ordinance, so. It's easy to say, hey, well, we should do this or we should do that. But two years from now, you know, things can change. So I think then page 10, 11, and 12 were, we, we put together what these schedules show. And Liz, this is what you asked me a couple of minutes ago, and Jimmy also asked me the same thing. Page 10 shows, and these are approximated numbers, so they're not exactly perfectly equal with page two. But you're going to see on page 10, that if we were to earn 5% each year on the water reserve, this is kind of what, what the pay-down schedule would be. And I know the, the, when the bond schedules were done by our underwriters two weeks ago, you know, it, it looked as though we could take out $4 million. And when I did this just the other day at 5%, we, it, it shows down a payment schedule that $3.9 million would be the debt service we'd be paying. And then the second to the last column says excess to general fund debt payments minus needed debt. So again, if, if we put the money in the water reserve and the water reserve earned 5% interest every year, you know, we're going to get $6.5 million, $7 million in interest and principal that we can spend for the next 20 years. And this is kind of what the thing would be. And, and, and that would be equal, 5% every year after year after year. So the next two pages are, what I did was, the first page, page 11, I took, starting in 2000 up through 2019, this is if, if we would have followed the, the returns of the water reserve through these years, you can see that, that excess of the general fund goes down to $2 million a year. And that's because of the ebb and flow of the stock market and the bond market. You know, those years, 2000, 2001, 2002, as you can see, the very top right numbers, 0%, negative 1%, negative 10%. We got off to a very bad start in those, in those years. I mean, the market back then was, it was, it was down. So in that case, you know, the amount we're going to be able to take out goes a lot, it goes down a lot. Now, page 12, as the mayor made mention, if you get off to a, a good start, we put that money, we put that money in the water reserve on October 23rd and over the next six months, the stock market goes crazy in, in a, in a positive way. You can see that putting the money in, in the water reserve in, in a reverse fashion, like this year one is actually 2019. So I just reversed it back. I mean, just fool around with the numbers, you know, you could pick numbers out of a hat, but I fooled around with the numbers. I went forward and backward. Well, if you get 22% one year, negative 5 and 17 the year after, you know, you aggregate those things, you have 35% income, interest income over the first three years. That's 11, 12% average, you're doing pretty good. So again, these, these numbers are all hypothetical and there's nothing to say that the way the last 20 years have gone forward or backward is anything that's ever going to happen in the future. But I just thought for, for, again, for talking points, as the mayor said a little bit ago, you know, you can see that i- if we have a good start, just the difference between the bad start of the way the, the interest has been returned in the water reserve the last 20 years versus if it would have been reversed, you know, that excess line is, or column is $2 million in the one setting and it's $4 million in the other setting. It just, I mean, the way the market moves is a huge issue here, so.
And I would just add that either way, we're better off than putting it all in treasury.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, that, I mean, yeah, so.
Buy a lot, buy a lot of money, about one and a half million in one case and about three and a half million in the other.
And the, the last page, page 13, as you look at that, 85-20, and I know it talks about refunding bonds. But I talked to Tim Senad and up at Knox and Nick Falgione from PNC Bank. And they're both really, really comfortable on that word irrevocable, irrevocably deposited. When we put, if, if we were to take the $80 million and put it all in the Bank of New York or Mellon Bank on the 23rd as our paying agent, as Jay used the word escrowing is what I always call instead of a sinking fund or some of the other words some of the people use. But if we put it in there, it's pretty much, that's, that's a done deal. We're going to follow that treasury schedule on page two. So. That's all I have. Questions? And I, I know this was just, this is a food for thought on where we need. And I, I know this was just, this is a, a food for thought on where we need to start thinking about this stuff. But we're going to get the money in three weeks. So. You know, any questions, problems, issues, anything you want me to work on, anything you want me to pull up, we'll work on it. I can't, I can't. And that's, that's the one thing, that's why I did this forward, backward. I mean, you want me to do a schedule, I put 20, pulled 20 years of interest rates out of a hat? I don't know what that's going to come up with. I mean, we don't know, nobody knows. I mean, I'll take you to Vegas tomorrow, if you know how the market's going to, I mean, I is going to return the next 20 years. But we do have 20 years of, we do have 20 years of historical returns here. And we know that, you know, Standard and Poor's and Dow Jones have, have, um, tracked this stuff for a hundred years and it, it's all better than three quarters of a percent the treasuries are going to pay. But just because it's been like that for a hundred years doesn't mean that it's going to be like that forever. But it has been like that for a long time. So. I just want to, I mean, that's, I know I'm trying to, I'm being conservative here in saying this, Jim, that.
No, I just know you want to cover.
The, the base needs to be covered. We need somehow to cover $9 million of debt service every year for the next 20 years. And earning $4 million a year in interest is a heck, it, it, yeah, that surely absolutely helps the budget. Yes, absolutely. That i- if, you know, if we knew there was going to be 5% a year, that's a great deal. Six or seven or eight percent would be much better. But, you know, it is what it is with knowing what's going to happen. So, yeah, and the, and the front page, um, you know, I, I just said the very last little paragraph, the amounts other than page one, you know, which is our current bond schedule, the amounts are hypothetical and can change through movements in the bond market and investment vehicles. I mean, a- a- in my last sentence, based on the bond market back in the summer, we were expecting to receive about a hundred million dollars and it moved itself down to 97 million dollars in the last three or four months. I mean, you never know what's going to happen. But if we were to, you know, if EWW were to sell their bonds in January, we might've got 104 million dollars. Don't know. But there is a history of, um, the pension plans and water reserve making a much, much better amount of interest than the treasuries would give us. But we need to perfect through ordinance that that money needs to be taken out of there every year to pay down these bonds. It, it, because, you know, the last thing in the world we want to do is, is not pay our, our bondholders. And I'm done. Mayor, anything? Sorry for talking too much.
That's okay. I, I, I just, if there's any questions, we're certainly happy to talk it through.
Mayor, um, what, what is the mechanism for moving forward or do we need to approve an ordinance? Or, uh, are we just, um, I'm, I'm just asking the question ahead of the schedule here.
Yeah. Paul, do they need to pass?
Yeah, well, yes, I think, yes, absolutely. We're, we're going to have to, we're first, the first thing, Dave, once we get the money, and I can set that ordinance up, that you're going to have to approve an ordinance accepting this money. And Ed and Tim, Ed Betts and Tim Senate have been working on, um, there's a couple of changes to the contract with the Erie Water Works and there's a change obviously to the, to the payment contract we make with them to the annual fee. So yeah, there's going to be, there's going to be a multitude of ordinances and resolutions in the next month, a month and a half dealing with all of this stuff. But this, David, this is one of them that will have to be dealt with also. The receipt of the cash.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was just saying, we, uh, I know there's the content of what we're doing itself, but also just, I was just kind of thinking ahead of the mechanism. So we're prepared and we don't want to waste time later when this, uh, when this goes forward.
Yeah, we're going to have to appropriate this money into our, into, you know, into our, into our world. Yeah.
Paul, I'd like to have all that ready to go in two weeks at the next council meeting because we're going to get the money shortly after that.
Yes.
I just want the people to know out there that we have not won the lottery. That this money is being invested to pay down our debt. And please don't ask us at Christmas time to withdraw and make donations to your agency. Thank you.
That's absolutely right, Kathy. And we're also going to prevent any tax, tax increases to the people of Erie for the next two years here. That, you know, there, there should be no tax increases in the budget based on what we're proposing here. And my real long-term goal, we still have to kind of work out this details of this, but I'd like to have no more tax increases for the people of Erie based on what we're, what we're doing here. We have to see how things work out, but, uh, that's my goal.
Eric, I know that, I know I mentioned this earlier. I just want to throw it in real quick. Is that, yeah, I support this opportunity. It is an opportunity and I, and it's great that we're moving forward. But I do want to make sure that we also address the, um, you know, the, uh, you know, we need to continue to raise, uh, income and um, also, uh, address the rising cost for workforce. And again, it's not going to happen overnight, but, uh, you know, I know you have some plans in place to, we're slowly doing that. It's not going to happen right away, but I just want to keep that in conversation, um, so that we don't just think, you know, like we have this present, we're going to move forward and be okey dokey. You know, there's a lot of, um, issues to address. So I'm just throwing that in there not to sour the issue, but, but I'm sure you know that already.
Thank you. Another thing we're proposing, just so you're all aware of it, is that, uh, say we're getting just under $97 million. We want to set 17 million of that aside, uh, and just a little under 80 million then will be invested as we've been talking about here. That 17 million is primarily to get us through this year and the next two years. Uh, we're hoping deficits aren't as large as we originally projected and we should know that in another month or two here, have a better feel for that. But, and the one other request I've gotten from Chris Groner is he'd like to increase one of the city's loan funds by $2 million to, uh, and most of that money would actually be led to businesses. About one and a half million of that would be led to businesses that they would pay back over time. And about 500,000 of it would be grants to businesses. Uh, so that, that's, so, so the 17 million we set aside, 2 million will be, will go into our loan funds. And 15 million then is just sitting there to get us through the next couple of years without any tax increase. Hopefully in those next couple of years, we're also increasing the number of people living and working in Erie and raising our annual revenue rather than one-time revenue. Uh, so that should get us through at least the next two years. And we can obviously talk more about any of this as well. I'm just trying to be as open on it, honest with you as I can be.
Paul, what is the timeline for the 2021 budget?
Uh, Mayor, do you want?
Well, well, I'm hoping to present that to you at the next council meeting also. That's my goal. So that you'll have the proposal two weeks from today and then we could start meetings and talking it through and, and all that.
Okay. Will that be presented, um, like at the caucus beforehand or this is where you'll, you'll present it? So the, you know, I mean, I know the caucus is public, but will it be part of your? I know sometimes you've had the, you had the floor at the beginning of the meeting. So is that how that will work, do you think, or?
That's what I was thinking of doing. We could do something different if you want, you know.
No, I thi- I think that was helpful. Um, and I think it's helpful to anybody who's watching and listening.
Yeah. And this is a couple of weeks earlier than, than we did it last year. So I'm happy about that.
Okay. And then will we have a schedule actually of like, are you going to be doing anything different in terms of like work sessions? Because you know, I've, well, the, the sessions I've participated in, I've been disappointed that a lot of times those work sessions are budget heads coming to us and saying, this is why I need this much instead of presenting like some innovative ideas. Do you have a, a timeline for when, when the, uh, budget work sessions will be held or are you still working on that?
Well, I, I think usually.
Timeline and format.
Yeah, I think usually, that's, that's council's decision. You guys can set that up however you want.
Okay. But I would think since we're getting it earlier that someone will need to work with your administration to, to do those, um, work sessions. And also to figure out, um, if there should be a new type of format in those presentations. I guess what I'm saying is I hope it's not, here it is, you know, and then we'll uh, use all this energy and time and research to say, well, maybe we could do this and this and this, and then nothing happens with that. So I, I guess I would really urge council or the administration to go back and look at some of those ideas that, that we have proposed both in terms of, um, revenue generators and, uh, you know, possible, uh, it changes in the way, um, the city functions, um, before we start those work sessions. Because that, that has to rank as one of my biggest disappointments in being on council is that, you know, I, I'm sure you remember me standing at, at the flip chart, writing down ideas, organizing them into a, um, a document and then basically nothing happened with that. So I'm going to ask you to go back and look at, at those documents and say, yes, we did this. Here's what, here's our innovation beyond, you know, how, how the water money is going to be spent. So that's my ask today.
Okay.
For the future.
All right.
Okay, la- uh, last thing, since I went over my hour, I don't know if anyone wants to talk about the monthly summary report on the expenditures and revenues. We.
Before we go there, Paul, I guess what I would like with the, uh, maybe we should have one more study session regarding this water repayment. Um, to digest some of these numbers. And then if we have any questions, whether we ask the administration, Paul, and, uh, just, once again, this is first and foremost, then we can get to our budget end of it. Our yearly budget and next year's budget afterwards. So I would say if it's okay with you, Mayor, uh, we'd like to have another study session with this alone.
Okay.
And then, uh, move forward from there.
All right. And I don't know if there'd be time, maybe we could also present like a preview of the budget in the study session too. Just if you have any input before we present it then two weeks. So, yeah, if you want to get that scheduled, that's fine.
All right, we'll do that.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would suggest that any, uh, council person uh, that, once they review the, uh, information Paul sent out and what we discussed today, uh, draw your questions ahead of time and, uh, send it to the administration so they can come with answers to your questions.
Right, that'll be more informative than, instead of saying we'll have to get back to you.
So are we looking in October 15th then? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm sure that's going to work for me. Um, we can, council can check their schedules and.
That's fine for me. Be like 5:30?
Yes, sir. I'll get that together with Lori and, uh,
Great.
Right now be tentatively 5:30 on the 15th.
Great. Yeah, I hope that we can answer any questions or thoughts you have on, on, uh, the, the water authority and what we're going to do with that money. And then I'm also, Paul, I'd really like to present at least like a preview of the budget, uh, that we're going to present the next week. Uh, just to get any feedback, you know, giving us.
Yeah, because there's, there's, there's two, I mean, depending on what option we choose and depending, you know, there's going to be obviously a big difference in what the budget will look like just based on how, how we handle, how we handle the money.
Absolutely. And I guess what we present, unless we have other discussions before that, whatever we, whenever we present to you next Thursday, I'd like to be the 6040 investment of the funds, just to show you how that works. And if, if you don't go along with that eventually, we're going to have to redo that before the following Wednesday, but, uh, maybe we can even show it both ways, you know?
Yeah, that's what I was planning on.
That's, okay, that's good. Yeah, you could see both ways how, how it works out.
That sounds good.
Good.
All right. Anything else, counsel? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jay. I don't know if he's still on.
I think he's gone.
Yeah, he had a noon, uh, conference call at noon.
All right, anything else, uh, finance?
No, um, you got, everyone got your revenue expenditure report yesterday, the summary. Do you, do you all want to take a look at it and call me with any questions or problems or issues? Or do you want me to go through line by line right now? Okay, then I guess, anybody ask me questions, call me up. I'm there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative.